It's a spring.
There we go.
Okay, there you go.
All right.
Okay, we are opening the business meeting for the zoning board of appeals for Tuesday, April 1st, 2014. The Board of Appeals will conduct this meeting according to the rules laid out in Chapter 48 of the General Laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Robert's Rules of Order and its own particular set of rules entitled Rules of Procedure, a copy of which is on file with the town clerk. Another copy is available from the clerk at this meeting. This meeting is being tape recorded for the purpose of taking minutes. Once the minutes are approved, the tape may be taped over. First of all, we're gonna go to the finance report. Patty, we'll let you do that, please.
Okay, the first sheet is our FY14 expense line item spreadsheet. The last entry was the warrant we have to be signed tonight. These are supplies, office supplies, 197-19. So that will be, that will be it as far as office supplies out of this expense account because if you look under telephone, we've spent 206 so far. Last year's bill was 387 at the end of the fiscal year, which is June 30. So we have, on the right, you'll see 212-78. So that's what we have left and that's what we save for the phone bill. So any other expenses that we need to, for example, the legal ad that we need to sign a warrant on tonight to pay for the 70 West Main Street, that will come out of revolving. So anything else from here on out until July 1st will come out of revolving and then we'll get that 860 back again. And we had enough to spend because we had enough in postage, which you'll see on the next sheet is the postage meter spreadsheet. So we still have 174-99 in there. So we'll probably have to replenish that next fiscal year. We'll be putting more money in that. Let me know when you're good to go to revolving.
Yep.
Yep.
So, let me see. 210-14 revolving hours, right under that, under actual balances, 13-902-94. That balances with the next page, next, sorry. You get the second sheet with the amount spent to date and the fees taken in. And then that balances with the town accountant. She's a little behind, so like she's behind what I have, so she has this as a March 12th.
Okay.
Okay. Next thing are the three motions we need for the three warrants in that red folder Paul has. I just gave you photocopies of what's there. There's the Boston symptoms, symptoms. I had symptoms in the laptop and that's why we use Boston Systems, so.
Is that all fixed?
Sort of.
Um, most of it.
Bad question.
Enough to get by, yeah.
Get some warrants.
So.
I move the board approve warrant to pay Boston System Solutions $90 from the revolving account, count number 532041.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Another motion for office supplies.
And the office supplies are listed there under the WB Mason.
Yeah, WB Mason, yep.
So you know what I got.
Folders.
Ink. Ink is the most expensive.
Frame, hanging folder, headphones.
I move the board approve payment to WB Mason, the amount of 197-19 for office supplies to be paid from ZBA expense line item, account 11762.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Quick question, how are you getting your ink so cheap? Seventeen ninety-nine. I'm paying like forty bucks, all right?
Are you getting the high yield one?
I have no idea. So are you?
If it's a small package, it's seventeen ninety-nine. WB Mason with the town's account.
Oh, that's probably why, it's cheaper than Staples.
But if I find it on Staples, I'll get it. But the high yield, like the black, I buy the high yield, it's forty-four something.
Okay.
So.
Now, there should be one more warrant here.
Yeah, we didn't get.
Oh, right, okay.
We didn't get the bill in, but it's coming next week, so if you wanna sign that, that's up to you.
Do you know the amount?
Yeah, it's right there.
I mean, how do you know without the bill? You're sure it's gonna be the right amount?
The legal ad is right here.
Okay, so you know what the...
Hold on. Yeah. I should've put this in behind that, I'm sorry. See, it says bill to Town of Georgetown on 12.
So I'll move that the board approved warrant to pay, who are we paying?
Eight-way media.
Eight-way media?
Eight-way media and the amount of sixty-six dollars and eighty cents for a legal ad regarding 70 West Main Street, paid from the revolving account, 5-32041.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Laptop discussion. Why don't you...
Um, that just came from when I was having problems.
Well, I give the board some background, yep.
What I do is I send, so I send documents from the desktop at Town Hall home to this, which is mine, to, I send the minutes home, because that's what I do is the minutes. They wouldn't open. Nothing I sent from Town Hall would work, open, I don't know what was going on, and then this thing would not disable, which didn't allow me to use this, so it was a couple days before the last hearing, so I kinda told Janet in the selectman's office and she said, "Well, IT can look at it, but let me," you know, she talked to Mike and he said we'd have to be billed for it. And he let us do that because I wasn't using it for work. But he said, "If things keep coming up, you're just gonna keep getting bills, you might wanna just get one like the other departments did and, I don't know, it's a lot of money." I mean, I don't think that I mean...
I think that's a real lot of money for dual core.
No, but when this, this thing crashed, this is two and a half years old.
Yep.
And I had a meeting coming up, I had to go out and buy, buy this, my own.
Do you have a backup? Like carbonite or anything, so? There are online systems to be able to back up everything you do for like a real short amount of money that I really think should be included in, you know, our budget, so we don't lose anything should this kind of stuff happen. I use it for my business.
The only thing I'm thinking is this is her personal computer and I don't know why we don't have a computer, a ZBA.
Well, if we're not gonna pay for it, at least now they're paying for hers to be repaired. But I think it's a great point.
I mean, if, if we fix hers seven more times, we could've bought a new one. And then she's out any amount of time that it's being repaired.
In my, in my, the last, all the laptops I've had, I've never had one past four years. They just, they just, this is already freezing up on me, two and a half.
So, I guess I have a, personally, I don't feel it's appropriate that Town Hall, if you have to, if you're required to do Town Hall work at home, which is a different discussion, I don't think it should be required to be on someone's personal computer.
Well, no, yeah, she's working with it right now, her own personal computer.
And I think that's inappropriate and therefore, and I don't think a thousand dollars for a laptop is a lot.
If it becomes a gray area, if she has a town issued supplied laptop.
Yes.
Then she can't use it for personal.
That's right.
And that's fine.
And that's gotta be clear.
Oh, that's totally something.
Because I, I'm a hundred percent in favor of she should be supplied with a laptop that she uses here, and also I know how much work she does at home. She should be able to take it home. But it can't be a personal...
Just to make sure, because I know somebody's, somehow, someday, somebody's gonna audit and say, "Geez, Patty, that's not all personal," when they have to come in and repair it.
When they set it up, they will set it up with, for example, the town's antivirus and all that, and he's gonna load in Office, another version, and my Outlook for Town Hall and whatever antivirus they use, so it will be property of Town Hall, use only at Town Hall. I mean, if I have to look up Salem deeds, I can do it on the desktop, I mean, but if I had to, but the only way it would be going home is to do the minutes and then it would come back, just like Kong Kong.
Now, what would the budget process have to be to try and get this on a line, to get it approved?
I mean, can we get another quote, too? Does it have to go through?
See, everything has to come through.
The systems, it's a nice gig. How do they get that gig?
Tell them it's too expensive.
We have some kind of contract with, that's who we use. We have an IT personnel that comes in.
I'd pay that for a quad core, but I'm not gonna pay for a dual core.
Well, why don't we get a quote from somebody else and then make them match it?
Do you remember what we did, remember what we did way back?
No, we can, we can still get a quote from somebody else, and then we can say, "Why are we paying this guy 760 when we can get it at Staples?"
I can ask, I can ask Mike.
I would.
I just wonder what part of that is, a package of service included or something?
When we got the desktop.
Oh, it's gotta be apples to apples.
When we got...
Oh, no, I agree. I just think that he's got a...
We got the desktop and how to get it through Boston.
But you can still get a quote from somebody else to use it against this guy to make his price lower.
Yeah.
But just make sure that the whole package is included as far as service, warranty, hourly service, you know what I mean? Will they come here, do you have to bring it there? Because we're using Town now, they also had, they have an IT company coming in here to service everybody. You know what, that saves them a lot of money.
Yeah, so if it's bought through, it's purchased through them, it goes on their warranty thing, so if something goes wrong, the IT guy comes to my desk and looks at the laptop.
Just apples to apples, that's all.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, I can...
I mean, maybe it's gonna be the same price, but I think we need to know that.
All right.
Okay.
So do they add in part of the budget with the upgrade, so in three years, this computer will be, like, does the town have some sort of, you know, a hundred dollars?
Of course they don't.
Of course not, yeah.
This would come out of our revolving account, but that's something I can talk to Mike about, too.
They don't have a replacement policy.
It's a computer. I mean, I don't know what it's used, kinda what you used.
I know. I think I did, yep. Oh, three, right?
Yep.
Yeah, they're all done.
Okay, we need to make motions now. You've got a little bit of homework.
So did everybody sign those?
All right, they're coming back your way. Dave, I think you gotta hit them and then we're good.
Sorry about that, I'll get a book.
So we're leaving it that you're gonna get another quote for us, just to see if you can negotiate with, with our computer supplier.
Yeah, do you want me to, like, just call?
Yeah, just...
Even Staples or something?
Call somebody local, that's not gonna have an issue. If you can find somebody reputable, that's not gonna have an issue because of, you know, nobody wants to, nobody wants to drive an hour.
Right. Sign in red. No sign in red.
Well, listen, that's all I got, matches the folder.
Can't sign in red? When you copy it.
Well, I did.
I would imagine this is gonna come back to us in a month, you have ferreted allegations.
I'll just get, I'll get, unless you want me to just email you and, yeah, we'll start around the next agenda.
That's fine, so then, so then does the board need to make a motion to buy a new computer for you? Yes, obviously, we do.
If you, oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so it's a warrant.
Yeah.
Okay. And there's, that's it, we don't need to talk to Mike again or anything, we can just do it, because it's coming out of our account, okay.
Okay. New business, didn't know.
Uh, well, we've gotta make a...
I sent those out.
We gotta make a couple motions on the business minutes for 70 West Main and the hearing minutes for, we have business minutes and 70 West Main, and then we also have minutes for 60 and 64, 74 East Main.
Right, I separated it because Sharon was not here for the, you know, Sharon's recused from the second one, so that's why I separated them all.
Need a motion to approve business meetings and 70 West Main Street.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
I'd like to make a motion to approve hearing minutes, meeting minutes for 60 and 64-74 East Main Street as of 314, 3414. Sharon was recused.
Yes.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That was your finest work, Patty.
Oh, abstain.
That really was. That was a lot of work, I actually...
Those minutes?
Right, yeah.
What the hell?
What was it, like fifteen pages?
And we're gonna do it again tonight.
Maybe.
And you cut my abstention, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Excuse me, but they were...
Actually needs a new headphone, she wore the other ones out.
I didn't attach them because the, why, you know, kill fourteen trees. Okay.
Okay, new business.
Correspondence.
Correspondence.
No idea what those districts are.
That's just, this is just, um, uh... It's a humongous plan, it's downstairs, it's a highway culvert from Peter Draky.
Oh, excuse me, I jumped ahead.
Where are you?
Waterways Regulation Program.
Here did you go?
We're in Department of Environmental Protection, I think.
Yeah, that's, that's the highway culvert.
Okay. Any action was supposed to take on this?
No.
Just received?
Just a heads up.
It's, it's a huge, it's downstairs.
I know, just so we received it, okay?
Is it going out to bid, is it, what's...
No, he's doing it himself, I believe.
I, I think they're doing it.
Well, they got the equipment to do it.
The next one is just, is the notice of the public hearings for all the zoning amendments for Town Meeting.
Brook Street?
That they held on March 26th. No, not yet. The next one is, and I have it in here, I asked Howard for electronic, but didn't get it to me. This is an OSRD. Oh, sorry, this one's Forest Conservation, Notice of Intent for Chaplain Hills Road to Brook Street. So they're filed with conservation and on the next page, there's an, they're filed with planning for an OSRD, which is, hold on. It's preliminary, so I know they want comments on it, but it's still preliminary. It's, OSRD is Open Space Residential Subdivision, and I have plans here, if anybody wants to look at those. So it's, um...
It's all proposals, so I don't think...
Going from the end of Chapel, Chaplain Hills down to the end of Brook Street, there's a brown house there.
It also borders Nelson, right? The property, I believe, borders Nelson. But you know, I don't know, but we need to, it's simply a proposal, so...
It's a preliminary. I mean, they might decide not to do an OSRD and do, you know...
Yeah, I'm ninety-nine percent sure, also that property, 123.
Yeah, it does.
Borders Nelson as well.
If you look beyond, it does.
I think it does. So, I asked Howard to get me some electronic plans, so you guys can look at it, to comment better on it, because to pass just one of these lines, and it's here if anybody does wanna look at it, as well as the notice of intent. So it's forty lots, which I'm sure will be, usually they get cut down.
Hundred and twenty-three acres.
Who knew?
It's a lot of room there.
The other thing I just threw out at the end of the application is the letter, the memo you guys did, well, the comments that you guys put together for the accessory apartment bylaw with the affordable, that the Affordable Housing Task Force came to us with. So what happened is, at the last planning board meeting, they ended up not recommending it to go on the town warrant.
Really?
Did they pass it over, they vote, uh...
They voted, they needed more information. And Harry, Harry was good in that, he, you know, was taking all your comments and concerns and said, "We need to, you know, look at this more." You know, he was, he was looking at, he was asking, he goes, you know, and, because the bylaw is really just one sentence in there that they're adding, striking and changing it with another sentence that I think puts DHCD in there and...
Did I see a piece of correspondence saying that this might not have gotten through in time and it still might be on the town warrant?
It's, right now, I got a draft of the town warrant today, John gave it to me, and it's on there, it was on there like it was on there months ago as a placeholder. So because, and I don't know if the selectmen have already voted on what's going on in the warrant, but normally if the planning board doesn't recommend it and they know it's not ready.
They can remove it.
They will just...
Pass it over.
Pass it over, so if Beverly, if Town Moderator, Town Moderator would need to get a motion, so she'll get no motion and then she'll pass it over. But Mike said it very well may still come off the final, I don't know. There's a timeline from when they have to have the wording and it printed and all that, it's a process.
Okay.
So it might still be on there, Mike said it might not. And if it is, it'll be passed over.
Is that it?
Oh, good.
So you're gonna get those plans electronically?
Yes, I asked Howard for those and he said he would get them to me as soon as he could.
And when do we have to have comments?
By April 9th. So, I'm hoping I get them Thursday. I'm just gonna make a note to remind him.
By April 9th.
That doesn't give us a lot of time.
I'd like to, I'd like to look at that afterwards.
Okay, well, you can actually take this and bring it back to me.
Yeah, I'll look at it, thank you. Okay, someone like to make a motion to close our business meeting? I believe we've got it all, right?
Yep, the only other thing is they have applications out there.
But we don't have it.
They didn't make the, they're not gonna be ready for, for May, as far as I can see right now. There's two of them out there. Potentially three. So one is, one is the, the Forest Congregational Church, the cell intended we granted. So Verizon has come in, spoke to me a while ago, but more recently spoke to John. So I'm just waiting for something to come in.
They never did anything to it?
No, they never pulled a permit, so it expired.
Permit expired, the variance did.
Well, AT&amp;T was, was purchasing them, was gonna, something happened and then it all just got...
What's the other one? The other potential?
Sign at Pomodori's, but I don't know if that's coming to us now, it might go to Planning, John said.
Who?
Pomodori's.
Pomodori's, Pomodori's, yep.
What Crosby's is.
Why is it bigger than it should be, or?
Well, evidently the signs that were on Jimmy K's were not supposed to be there, so I think they might wanna put a larger sign, there's a, you know, the thing on top, there's a little, I'm calling it a turret.
We don't really have a signage by law.
All right. Okay.
All right.
Yeah, let's...
A motion to close?
Yes, please.
Motion to close.
Second.
That's three that we've had.
All those in favor?
So tired laptop, can't keep up with that. All right.
Yeah, I need a second.
Do you need a second?
Uh, yeah, let's keep going then, yeah, let's, oh, we gotta wait, we actually have to wait a couple minutes, okay. Um, yeah, the applicants for, um, where are we now? 70 West Main, you can, you can come up and sort of get ready, we're just waiting a couple minutes to actually open the hearing.
How the girl, Sharon?
Call me scrappy.
Probably don't, probably.
This is what I sent in before, it's the same thing, I just corrected like two typos and I added a supplement to it.
You added something to it?
Yeah, that might be helpful.
Okay, how many you got, Karen?
There's a total of, I need one and then there's six, I think.
This is, um, Dave, this is the supplement that...
This is updated from what we have?
Yeah, he made two typo corrections, but he added something at the end.
Is that gonna outline the typos?
I need to run the police station. Are you okay?
Oh, wait, oh, this is revised, I'm sorry.
I can give you an extra.
Yeah.
Do you have an extra copy? Oh, no, I have that.
And the first, first part was just a couple of grammaticals, the words...
Well, the one without the highlight is the, is the more recent.
Oh, the more recent one, okay. It didn't change, huh?
Do you have one?
If you have an extra, I can give it back to you.
Or I can share Sharon. Oh, yeah, I have an extra one, Mike.
Somebody got it.
I had the email, I marked it, I kept marking it unread, so I'd remember to go.
I know, I know.
It's, I'm sure I can show it to you unread.
Okay, guys, I'm gonna open this hearing. This is a hearing, zoning board hearing for 70 West Main Street. The Board of Appeals will conduct this meeting according to the rules laid out in Chapter 48 of the General Laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Robert's Rules of Order and its own particular set of rules entitled Rules of Procedure, copy of which is on file with the town clerk. Another copy is available from the clerk at this meeting. This meeting is being tape recorded for the purpose of taking minutes. Once the minutes are approved, the tape may be taped over. Uh, yes. You got one there?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Legal notice, Town of Georgetown Zoning Board of Appeals regarding ZBA 70 West Main Street. A public hearing will be held on April 1st, 2014, 7:30 PM at the Georgetown Town Hall Third Floor Meeting Room for petition, use variance request for 70 West Main Street, Georgetown, Mass, filed by owner Constantina Lenakis of Georgetown, Mass, and Lisi Mohammed Jamad of Malden, Mass, to operate a convenience store, retail store and services at 70 West Main Street, map 6C, Lot 117, located in the IA Zone, which requires a use variance under Mass General Law 40A, Section 10, and Georgetown Zoning Bylaw, Chapter 165, Sections 9, 84, and 94, in order to operate a retail store or service use, ZBA File Number 14-10, add in the Georgetown Record on March 14th and March 21st, 2014.
Thank you. Okay, we've gotten your, your first part, that we got this on, on email. Can you tell me about the supplement that you've given us?
The supplement really just, it augments the first part and it puts a couple of exhibits before the board. Basically says that this is a pre-existing non-conforming use and as such, a permitted issue to the applicant for the use as a convenience store. And the fact is that the subject property has been used as a retail restaurant or a restaurant retail type operation since prior to zoning, and I have proof of, of that. The property was Sawyer's Ice Cream and then Currier's Ice Cream was takeout ice cream stand prior to zoning. The tax card supports that. There's also mentioning in a previous zoning board of appeals, minutes about this being a pre-existing non-conforming structure. What the, the case law says basically about a non-conforming use is it, it has a three-part test, and it, the test is, does the current or proposed use reflect the nature and purchase of the use which prevailed when the ordinance or the bylaw took effect? And here, the quality and character of the use was for retail sale of food... And here, the quality and character of the use was for retail sale of food to the public. I mean, the difference between retail, it, it really is confusing, if you, if you read my first part. Um, I did have a problem, I, I went to the bylaws and I tried to find the definition of a restaurant. And this, a, a restaurant is enclosed and served in a. Inside the, the facility, according to the, the bylaws. Um, I looked for a definition of retail in the bylaws and I, and I couldn't find one. So what I did is I went over to the statutes and I went over to the common law. And um what I found was that retail really is the breaking down of commodities from a larger um. Product into smaller products to be able to give to the public. Which is what this property has been doing since the beginning of time. Um, there used to be a couple of ice cream stores there, the lines used to be out down the street and um. Um, it was really a retail operation. As, as a matter of interest on, as part of the supplement, what I did is I looked at the permits. That the um Richdale has. And then what I did is I just went to a restaurant in town and I pulled out a list of the certificates that they had to run the business. And um if you, if you look at it, um you have. Uh, license for sale of cigarettes and cigars and smoke and it wasn't at this restaurant, but a restaurant could certainly sell something like that, restaurants all the time. Um, do have that type of thing. Um, there's a permit, uh, Richdale had a permit to operate a food establishment, the restaurant had a permit to operate a food establishment, establishment. The Mass State Lottery was at Richdale, the restaurant that I went to did not have that, but certainly I've seen many restaurants with, with exactly that. Um, and application for dumpster permit, uh, application for milk, frozen dessert, common victualers license, uh, sales use and tax. Um, so, you know, the purposes really have so much in common. And really what this is, 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 is looking at a place. Uh, the best example I can come up with is actually case law. And I'm gonna make up the shirt, shirt and tie part, but it was a different product, but. You have a place that was selling shirts and ties and maybe it was selling seventy percent shirts and thirty percent ties. And what happened is that they wanted to go ahead and, and reverse it and they wanted to sell seventy percent ties and thirty percent shirts. And there was, were objections to it and that it was a, it was considered a, a change in use. And it wasn't a change in use, what the court decided was that it was a pre-existing non-conforming use. And it was simply an extension of that use, so the supplement. Uh, to answer it more directly, the supplement talks about the legal criteria and determining whether something is a pre-existing. Uh, non-conforming use and the criteria um for the expansion of that use. And what I'm looking for the board to do is, is an application, as you know, we put in the application before for a special permit. And now we're here with an application for a variance based upon the letters that we had gotten from the um building inspector. Um, but I, I would like to almost continue the hearing for a variance and maybe get an advisory from the zoning board of appeals. Um, if, if it is in your opinion that this is an extension of a non-conforming use. And that it meets the criteria uh that the courts have put forth. And based upon that, hopefully I can just go to the building inspector and have a, a permit issued. Unless there's a different road we should go down or, or whatever you think.
Yeah, I just, is there anyone from the audience that has any uh feelings about this, this hearing? And if you do, uh, okay.
Can I make a general, ask a general question first as part of your presentation, cause I think. I'm asking you to elaborate a little bit as a. You've done a good job so far of talking about the nuances between the actual uses. Um, as a practical matter, can you reiterate, cause this is a new hearing?
That's okay.
Uh, maybe reiterate a little about what, what the proposed use will entail? And what you plan to do with the property and whether it's gonna be renovation, the, the whole, tell us, tell us what, what the plans are here a little bit, I think, and, and what the impact. You know, may or may not be for better or for worse than the.
If anyone here has been at the Richdale in Georgetown, it's essentially moving the Richdale store from that location over to the new location at seventy. Um, West Main Street. And what the, what it is, it's the sale of potato chips and soft drinks and milk and butter and, and. Small convenience type items, there is the um, um. Sale of a lottery, there's the sale of cigarettes, there is the sale of um potentially a different food in the future, they used to sell hot dogs and. Uh, sort of had a contractors package where you had a couple of hot dogs and.
Little coffee shop.
Yeah, li- little type of thing like that. So it's not making any uh changes to the interior of the building whatsoever, not making any changes to the exterior of the building. Um, there would be signs that would, we would uh go up and we would apply for a sign permit. Um, but essentially just to keep it e- exactly the way it is. Um, and to go inside and make some very minor renovations uh to accommodate a counter and, and shelves, that type of thing. But otherwise, it's the same footprint, it's the same bathroom, uh, same windows, same exterior, same parking, same everything. The only changes that we would make is, uh, we did talk to the neighbor and we've come to terms with them that we'd be putting up a, or. We're gonna allow them to put up the fence and we'll pay for it, a fence with the, the neighbor to the left of the property. Um, with some sort of sound breaking barrier. And in addition, we'll put up signs down below that will um, uh, have no loitering. Because that's a little bit of an issue that's going on there right now, is that people go around behind the store and they sort of hang around. Um, and also a video monitoring system so that the clerk inside can see outside. Into that area where people tend to, to gather at this point. Um, so that if anything happens, they can pick up the phone and call the police to.
What about the uh, the current section that was doing the ice creams?
The current, Mohammed?
It will be one.
It'll be all open.
Gonna take that down, so there's not, they're not gonna sell the ice creams there?
Well, they still sell ice creams, but not in that form, they'll have the.
Right.
They have a two or three chest of ice creams, I think.
Yeah, but not the drive up for an ice cream cone.
And the, the kitchen, I assume, is gonna be removed, right? You're gonna, you're not gonna gut the building, but you're gonna substantially remove the, the interior.
Remove, the building is empty.
Sorry.
Oh, that's okay, they, they know better than I on that.
And again, before we get into too much discussion, can you, can you talk about? A little more about the history of, of the uses to date? More specifically, um, I know that there's been ice cream stand there, can you talk a little bit more about what's gone on there in the past? I know there's been several different restaurants in there since I've been in town, but I don't know.
In nineteen forty-eight, it was Riverside Dairy Inc., which was owned by the Curriers, which eventually actually moved down by, I think. Um, Penn Tucket Pond. But I, I can even go back a little further, the reason why this was originally industrial property. Um, and there were six lots that are in this I A zone, was that there used to be. A train track that used to come right through there, so it was a great place to load and, and unload and, and do that type of thing. Um, what happened is you have the place behind where the Georgetown Electric used to be. Um, which is now twenty-one E, that was a um, a light manufacturing. Um, I don't think we'll see anything go there in, in the immediate future. You have the municipal building that the electric company is, uh, is or was in. Um, then you have this property and then you have, if you go down Molton Street, um, there's a long industrial building. And I believe that the zone actually cuts that in half, half of that's in the residential and half of that is in the um industrial. Um, I, I A, A, I A. So when this building was originally built, it was built as an ice cream store. Um, and since then, um, there have been several um other. Uh, stores or, or entities there, primarily sub shops, there has, there was Athena's Restaurant that was there. Um, but it was primarily sub shops, pizza, that type of, of, of thing where people would come up, order what they want. Some people would stay there and eat and some people would take their food and, and go. And that's, that's the history of the, the property until what it is now. So if, if the convenience store doesn't go in there, then I would assume it would be another sub shop or, or, or something else like that.
I don't believe anyone, no one has any comments from the audience, so we can, we can fire away, uh, board. Board members, if there's any questions or clarifications that we need about this. Everybody from the audience is interested?
No objections?
You have a butter here?
Did you? I think they've resolved, resolved.
Yeah, I mean, we kind of like are in sixty-eight West Main Street. Uh, yeah, I mean, my concern was more so the, uh, the type of business. Cause it was open a little bit later and there was, I see a loitering problem across the street, but. Um, it's been promised to be addressed. Uh, by fence, uh, shrubbery, signs. Hopefully just them telling people not to hang out, you know, the, the front of the store is not gonna be visible from my house. But where we believe that the hangout will be, will be. So, I mean, basically, we just, we don't see it, I guess it's not a problem.
And that's where they're stating that there will be a video monitoring system behind the building?
Yeah, a bluff, uh, yeah, something, you know, like.
Something so the clerk can see on the.
Yeah.
Oh, we're talking about what's going on there.
Yeah, I mean, as of right now, I understand there's a, a contribution of four thousand dollars. To be made for uh these upgrades. And I, I think that should probably cover what we're looking for.
Okay, thank you.
Upgrades in terms of fence and shrubbery or?
What, what, what we did is, is I talked to their attorney and we talked to them about their concerns and we have. Um, email and, and writing back and forth confirming that um if we can get our permits, that we will. Contribute X amount of dollars to putting up a fence and a sound barrier.
That's what the four thousand dollars is.
And the, the video system and then put up no loitering signs with the purpose that the clerk can see what's going on. And if there's a problem, they can just pick up the phone and, and call the police so that people, kids aren't hanging around out back there.
Yes, sir. Please introduce yourself.
My name is Mohammed, I'm the applicant, actually. I like to move from across the state, Richdale I own now.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, like since two thousand uh one. I actually, I was hiding partner, but last three years I take over myself and I run it, so. And I'm trying now because um I believe uh, uh, Richdale, they wanna do something there, I don't think that's what they wanna do. So that's why I like to move across the state. And uh, the main thing, because now the building has two doors, one door in the back, door, door will be closed. Usually people will come from the front door and go to the front door, there will be no door in the back, so I think it's mainly stirred in the back.
Mm-hmm.
And so that's.
There will be no door hanging around this side line.
No, no door should, so people will be part in the front, they'll come to the front because the door will be closed, there's two doors in the back, say, it doesn't close.
Okay.
So only one door front and it in the back, just that.
Can I ask you, how, how long has uh Richdale's been in business there?
Uh, I don't know, I'm here two thousand one.
And was it there when you?
Yeah.
Oh, forever.
And what did you mean before the store, when they take over, was the only four hour store, but uh.
I'm here in town thirty-four years and I remember.
Long time.
So the convenience store has been successfully operating. How many, how many restaurant, oh, sorry, I can ask you. How many different restaurants have been in there over the last?
Oh, four or five different ones, they all doing the same thing, pizza subs. Don't last too long, that's why we decided to do something different.
I missed the Greek food.
Yeah, I just wanted to understand what the. Location can support.
Right, do we have a motion?
I have, I have a few more questions, I, I mean, I. Do we have other, oh, everybody's got some other questions about the process. Uh, personally, I, I think a use variance is, I think the argument that. The desired use is pretty similar to what's been going on there over the last. However many years is, is, is pretty valid. And there are a lot of similarities to those uses. Uh, to me, I think the board can find, so choose that. The requested use is substantially similar to the existing use. But I think it, it would represent an extension or an alteration of that use to a certain extent. And so in, in doing so, if it's a pre-existing non-conforming use, it's being altered or extended. We could, if we found that it's substantially similar. Uh, go the route of a special permit as opposed to a variance, I think a variance, again, in this. Context is fairly difficult to justify.
I agree, I, I think what.
You gotta deal with the whole hardship issue and.
I think a special permit is more applicable in this situation.
So I don't know, I know you've applied for a special permit to begin with and then John has corrected some, some findings that he had, I think there was a, a misinterpretation of which column he was looking in.
Well, it was, it was interesting because the last time this came out, it was almost the same issue. Is it a variance or is it a special permit? And that was in the um. The two thousand four hearing before the zoning board of appeals. And one of my, one of my concerns and the reason frankly why I, we even made just sort of a private arrangement and, and, and writing. Is that if there's an advisory from the board. That this is substantially the same, the, it, it's a previous non-conforming use, then what happens is, it's certainly up to the building inspector, he can deny it if he wishes. Um, and, in case I'll be back, but um, um, is that. It's not something that if, if, if you look at the criteria on my supplement. It goes over what the law is as far as determining whether something is an extension. That requires that type of permit. And what it is, is, is one, does the current proposed use reflect the nature and purpose of the use which prevailed when the ordinance of the bylaw took place? And, and, and that instance, you have basically, and it's funny because of the definitions, but you have retail sales by definition. Um, whether the, and, and of food, which is essentially the primary mission of what the, the, the convenience store is doing. Uh, whether there's a difference in the quality or character as well as the degree of use um of the property. And, and it has to be more than, it, it has to be a substantial, in other words, you, you can't have a, a small change, just like the tie in the, in the, in the shirt example. Um, that example, you know, just sort of highlights that the degree of, of change. Um, and then whether the current use is different in kind and its effect on the surrounding neighborhood. And um, the effect would be about the same, unless you have cars pulling up, getting items to go, picking up retail items and leaving. So, you know, that's, that's the criteria that we're looking at. If I had an advisory from the board to that effect, I could talk to the building inspector, if he could deny it, then I'd have to come back in and, and go from there. But I don't wanna put him in a bind, I don't wanna put you in a bind, I, I just um. Kind of push forward here and at the same time, um, do what I have to do.
My opinion is that if, my, my thought, I should say, is that if. Board were to find that this is substantially similar, but is perhaps an alteration of some kind, I think there's clearly gonna be more retail than, than restaurant. There is now, um, and we can issue a special permit. Then we can also incorporate some of the things that, that we've talked about tonight, including the restrictions to do the fence and put those things right in there and. Um, I wanted to ask about, you know, the kitchen is coming out. I assume there's an exhaust fan in there somewhere, which probably protrudes out the back of the building, I'm gonna guess, close to the residence, is that right? You know, that will obviously come out.
Yes.
Um, and would not be used in the future, that kind of thing, so.
No need for it.
To the, to the extent that you, you know, you might have similar traffic patterns in and out as what we've seen in the past. Um, I think we used to have people coming in to pick up pizza quickly and leaving, convenience store might be some of the same thing, you run in to get your. Sodas or whatever it is and you come back out, I, I, I don't know that there's gonna be a significant change in the traffic. People come and pick up ice cream, same, same sort of deal, so all that doesn't change, what can change and what can perhaps be an improvement. Is the noise from the exhaust fan uh to, to the butter. Between removing that perhaps and installing a fence and some natural screening for the, for the sound, I think that could actually be. You know, we could maybe find that it's less detrimental even than the existing use. If we, if we consider this as a special permit with those restrictions or those clarifications and the use that you're actually proposing and the fact that if we were to grant that, then they can't change that use now, again, even if it's come back to the board. In other words, you can't just go back, turn it back into a restaurant on your own, you've now changed the use to what you're applying for. Uh, because this board perhaps has found that that's reasonable, uh, and not significantly more detrimental to the neighborhood. So now going forward, it's not just a finding that we made that lets you just go ahead and get a permit, but it's, it's a, it's a permit that defines what we felt was reasonable. Perhaps, and then, and then that's it. And then if you want to come back, because this is non-conforming after all, uh, this is not the IB district, so.
Right.
Where you could come get a special permit for multiple uses perhaps.
So procedurally, how do I, I apply, I'm, I'm looking at non-conformities, one sixty-five ninety-four. Pre-existing non-conforming structures or uses may be extended or altered, provided that no such extension or alteration shall be permitted unless there's a finding by the board of appeals and granting a special permit that such change, extension, or alteration shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use to the neighborhood, a special permit shall not be required when blah, 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 and that has to do with something else. So presumably, that's, that's the authority, but then when I go to, um, the use regulation, there's another reference here. Um, I go to IA and I go to retail store and service. It has O, which is, which is, um, not permitted. So I, I, I'm in a little bit of a.
Well, we'd have to make a finding that the specific use as you've presented to us and the specific use that is existing non-conforming over the past period of time is substantially the same as you, as you've argued. Uh, we may or may not agree with that, I don't know. If the board were to find that the use is really similar but being altered, we, we'd make that finding tonight.
As it's tied to the non-conforming part of it, right?
Yeah, it's an existing non-conforming use that we find is being altered.
Right, but the, the criteria is, is that it has to be more than, than, it has to be a substantial alteration. Um, otherwise, it, it's, it's per se non-conforming and you don't have to go to the zoning board of appeals. But I'm asking the zoning board of appeals for their opinion on that, because otherwise, I'm going to go back to the building inspector and he's going to go like this, you know?
I'm suggesting we have to do two things tonight. We would have to find that the use is altered or being altered, you know, substantially enough. Or would be not detrimental to the neighborhood, provided we add certain conditions. Okay, so in and of itself, perhaps, the requested use, uh, may not be not detrimental to the neighborhood, but given the conditions that people are willing to abide by, uh, we could, we could mitigate that detriment by adhering to these conditions, so a special permit there would be necessary. Because you're altering a use and under certain conditions that we would impose, you could go about a retail slash restaurant use with a special permit going forward. If you've got to go look for a use variance, I think the argument is very thin. If you want a finding that you're not changing the use at all and that you have the right to simply convert this as you proposed, I don't know that I'd be necessarily comfortable with that either and neither with the building inspector. My opinion is, at this point, I think that provided, condition this thing a certain way, I think the uses are pretty much substantial as far as the use in the, in the neighborhood, the traffic and all the stuff that we discussed, I think they're pretty similar. You've argued it in, in your, in your case here, that, you know, I, I think what you're asking for is can we just make a finding that they're the same, go about your business, but you're going to go to the building inspector and I don't know that he's just going to grant you a permit, he might, he might not. Moreover, I think we need to have certain conditions in here. For example, uh, I don't think, I, I'd like to see if there's any further, further changes other than what you're asking for here specifically, then you've got to come back to the board for, for, for review again. So, which is when you have a special permit.
Also, I'm wondering if the special permit is not, you're, you're not wanting a special permit because it doesn't go with the sale of the property. Is that correct? Whereas a variance does.
No, no, I, that's, 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 um, the reason, I'm, I'm just procedurally, I, I, if you're telling me, in other words, because we came in before under a special permit and we were told, no, you can't come under the special permit, you need to go for a variance, so we came in under the variance. And then, and I realize you're trying to work with us, I appreciate it, I'm not, I'm not, I'm just sort of in a box here and I'm trying to figure out a way to take care of a business, for, for lack of a better name. It just takes so long and it's so hard, I just put together documentation for somebody to just open a small construction business. And I sat there, because I live in this world, and I said to the guy, hey, it's easy. Then I sat there and I said, okay, number twenty-three, number eighty-five, numbers, you know, getting one more license, getting one more permit, everything takes time. It's a complicated world, so this is, this is complicated, so I'm trying to.
I think the original.
Make it as quick as possible.
The original special permit application was triggered based in the fact that, um, the building inspector erroneously misread the table, but it was simply a new use. It was a, it was a, it was a different use that's not allowed in the, that's how he, he was interpreting it. That's what triggered the special permit, correct? So, you've got a restaurant, you're asking for a retail. He didn't make or nor did he analyze, nor is it necessarily his job to analyze the link between the similarities between what you're asking for and what you've got. That's more this board's role. So when he realized that he had made an error, simply by misreading the table, he corrected himself. Said, I'm sorry, I, I was looking at the IB column, if my understanding was, he was looking at the IB column instead of IA and, oh, you know, because I called and asked how to, you know, how are you coming up with special, whoops. And so that had to be corrected.
Well.
The reality now is, I'm sorry, just let me, if I can just finish, that now you've created, um, and I didn't really think about this until you played this out, that the link between the similarities of, of what's been going on there in the past and what you're proposing. And, you know, I don't think it's a stretch to say that these, these uses are substantially similar. Albeit, the change that you're asking for, in my opinion, is, um, is, is an alteration of, of the existing non-conforming use. So, I mean, I, I think the board can make that finding and then if we so choose, grant a special permit, we'll let you get on your way. Unless you don't feel it would be validated.
So, the thing is, is the, the restaurant wasn't necessarily allowed there either, and that's the existing non-conformity.
That's correct.
So then, if you're saying the restaurant and the retail are similar, then you're just changing, like it's, it's still non-conforming, but they're similar enough where that's when it's required a special permit. I'm trying to think of a situation where we've done a special permit on a house that was already non-conforming, but we allowed like a porch or something on.
It's a little different though, because there's special provisions for single-family homes.
But it's the same, but you're still getting a special permit to fix your, your non-conformity. So I feel like that's how this works, the way Jeff's explaining it.
Yeah, I think the extension of a non-conforming structure is a little bit different.
Well, it is, but I'm just trying to make a similarity with, you've got a prohibited use originally that you've already got a, a special permit for, so now you're, you're just extending, you're changing the use instead of building a porch, you know what I mean?
Would you, expanding the use?
Or altering it, or altering it. I don't, the building's not getting any bigger, are you increasing traffic? Uh, not maybe, maybe it's going down, I don't know. Uh, but it's certainly being altered.
Yeah.
You're going from more ties and less shirts to more shirts and less ties, that's an alteration and the, the board can review that to make a determination that, okay, it is an alteration, but it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood if we, again, that.
I think it's less detrimental than having a restaurant there, okay, in my opinion, okay?
I agree.
Uh, you have the disposal, you have the, you know, case of potential rodents, you have the noise, you have the odors. Um, and I think you've done a great job by helping clarify this for all of us, including John, the building inspector as well. I think the similarities are so close, okay? You know, as far as it's, it's like a minor alteration of use, in my opinion only. But I do really think that it's, it's less detrimental to the neighborhood than having another restaurant there.
Can I do this then? Is it time to get on to the next meeting? If I apply for a special permit again?
I.
Well, we, we've discussed that as well and you, you've advertised for variance.
Yeah.
But because it's a more restrictive permit than a special permit, we can grant a lesser.
Oh, okay.
Grant a lesser permit, are you worried about the ad?
Though.
Yeah, I'm worried about getting in and.
Yeah, no, we, we can, we can do this.
Okay, so then.
Without any, under this hearing.
Can we do that under this hearing tonight then?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would think so, I mean, did you, you asked John about that?
I asked, I asked the building inspector.
We, we've done it before where people have come in, particularly with.
With check of counsel.
Residential uses and they don't know, because you have to make a finding as to what's required and they don't know if it's a special permit or a variance. And now, when they advertise a use, and, it's an and or, it's a petition and an alternative.
If we had advertised for a.
In the past, they might advertise for a variance and if not, if one isn't determined not to be required, then issue a special permit or, or not.
If you advertised for a special permit and you needed, and you ended up needing a variance, then style will.
Is there any other information you need from me tonight that would be helpful? Is there anything we could do tonight or?
Do you have, um, anything in writing between the butters' attorney and you that kind of establishes what it is you agreed to do?
I have it on my cell phone.
No, it's fine, I'm just thinking if we were going to condition something.
Excuse me for a second.
Mike has.
Yeah, I just have a, a printed out email.
If you're going to use that, just.
Should I read it out loud or?
That's okay.
No.
It's okay with me, I'm just. Yeah, if you want, why don't you take a look at it and see if.
Should we do that?
Yeah, read it so then that way we all don't have to read it ourselves.
I'm sure there's no bad words. I'm sure there is.
Well, yeah, stop. Go ahead and read it out loud.
Okay, so, um, what I'm reading into the record is an email between the two attorneys, the butters' attorney and the applicant's attorney?
Yes.
Okay, it's dated four one, two thousand fourteen?
That was about three hours ago.
Okay. Um, attorney Evans, it's, it's between attorney Jeff Dowd, which I believe is the Garen's attorney and, and attorney Evans, which is yourself. Um, it's an email, as you know, my office is counsel to Michael and Jody Garen, sixty-eight West Main Street Georgetown, relative to the redevelopment of seventy West Main Street Georgetown for the proposed use of a convenience store. As per our discussion earlier today, in exchange of my client's support of a variance or to support the overturning of the existing finding of the building official for the need for a variance for your client's proposal for seventy West Main Street into a convenience store. Your clients, uh, your clients will contribute four thousand dollars for a sound barrier slash fence to be placed on my clients, and I'm clarifying for the audience, the Ga, Garen's, um, property. In addition, provided there are funds to do so, a portion of those funds could be used for reasonable screening on the seventy West Main Street side of the fence to reduce noise installed near the property line so as to not interfere with your client's operation of the property for the proposed uses of the convenience store. Your clients will also place no loitering signs at the property, particularly on the rear of the property, farthest from the street, and install video monitoring on the sides of the lot to discourage loitering. I appreciate your time and attention to this matter, kindly confirm your acknowledgement of our agreement of, by way of this response to this email confirming the same. Um, and then I believe, on the same date, April first, at four forty PM, which is uh, forty minutes later, I'm very impressed. Uh, attorney Evans responded to attorney Dowd. This is agreeable, this is agreeable, subject to my client's obtaining permits and taking possession of locusts as a convenience store. Is that fair?
Yep.
So I think that's what we have.
Yeah.
Do you mind if I, well, if we're keeping a note on it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Exhibit.
A?
Two correspondence, A and B or?
We also wanted to label some other exhibits here.
Yeah, we, we had, um.
So we'll do that afterwards, it's fine.
Yeah, we just had plans that.
Are you okay with this being A?
Yeah, yeah, good, do A, yep, yep.
Can I ask a few questions?
Sure, absolutely.
So, what, I'm, I'm glad that the, that, it sounds like the, the applicant and the butter are in agreement. And I don't mean to detract from that. I, I went to the property and I, I guess I was just wondering if there was thought about maybe separating with a, I don't know what, if, there might be other additional ways to separate, to discourage people from walking behind the building. Because, because the parking right now is just an open, it's an open flat space, you can just wander back there.
Yeah.
It was just a thought that I had, it, I, because I wasn't sure if you had those conversations with the butter about the fence, which it sounds like it will be on the butters' property. But it's, it's, it's quite, you can just sort of wander back there and there's quite a lot of space to hang out, so I wondered if there was, I don't know, maybe you put the screen closer to the building to prevent people from wandering back, do you know what I mean?
I, I, I wondered if, why, why wouldn't they connect the, the fence to the back corners of the building?
Oh, I don't know.
Just to completely close that off.
And that, well, that's, that, that would make more sense, I mean, I took pictures of it, but that's what I was wondering.
But that would be on their, their property, not the butters'.
Well, you can add an additional ten feet or however many feet it takes to, to tie that in.
I also wondered where the dumpster would be, but I guess there was a dumpster there before.
Have the pictometry pitches I gave out at the last meeting?
Oh, uh.
Is one of the picnic tables behind there, isn't that where they put for the ice cream?
On the right inside. They were on the right, no, they were on the right.
Right, they didn't go around the back?
No, and it's actually, because we used to walk to the ice cream store, it's actually not a comfortable place to walk behind. At least I wasn't necessarily comfortable walking with my children behind there.
Yeah.
Um, it's, it's kind of small and, I mean, I, maybe kids who were loitering and wanted to be secretive on purpose, but if you're doing the video monitoring, I think.
That would be sufficient.
Well, the other thing that's unknown, at least to me, is are there any, are there any, um, utilities back there that might need servicing, okay?
That's true.
That are just normal things?
It's a tight little area.
Yeah.
Well, you really can't close that off, make it inaccessible without now putting, putting up a gate. And if somebody wants to get through a gate, they get through a gate.
Yeah.
Ristrab.
You need, you need act, you need access for service.
Yes.
I was just trying.
That would make sense and I, to me, you know, the, having the video surveillance, to me, uh, that satisfies not only me, but obviously the most important person and that would be your butter.
Yes, the only persons, the, the kids coming through when they, from school. That's the only people I see and when the building right next to us, um, was occupied, that's the people crossing to Ritzdale. That's the only people I've seen crossing the street.
Is there any exterior lighting back there?
It is.
It's lit from the, it's on the, on the building.
On the building outside, yes. Sorry, you said the air conditioner and then the. It is two units of air conditions outside. And there's a septic tank back there? It is a, uh, yeah, and it is a ristrab.
Ristrabs, ristrabs are moving point now, if this is approved.
Yes.
But.
And we still have to go for a site plan review?
And then I just had a different, a different question, not related to this, but I, I wondered if, if, if we need to consider a bylaw for what is retail? Right, because this, this is why this issue came up, right? So, so.
I'm, you're losing me.
So, so, if I understood correctly, you, you went to, to Georgetown bylaws and you looked for a definition of what is restaurant, and you looked for a rest, a definition of what is retail. Absent that, we now have a case before us that's very compelling, that these are similar uses. So going forward, I'm wondering, since then you therefore relied on state statute, right? Would it be in Georgetown's best interest to be more clear about what is retail versus what is restaurants so that we have more to go on the next time a restaurant says, I want to become Richdale's?
I think the cases are pretty standalone, but you, you could.
I, I disagree.
In this particular case, in this particular case, I think a special permit will, could allow for the requested use period. And then any further changes in use, you'd have to come back before the board replies.
I'm not, I'm not saying about this case, I'm just talking on a, on a bigger level, I, I am in agreement for here, but I'm saying.
They need to add a definition of retail use in the bylaw.
Yeah.
I'm just, it's, for, for, just so it's clear, go for next time and be, because I think this could very easily happen again, I mean, several restaurants in town and you would use the same criteria absent any of our bylaws, right?
And I wonder how often it, it, these are non-conforming, most of the restaurants in town now are conforming, more than likely.
I don't know.
That's, that's the problem, this is a non-conforming use. That's, that's the problem. This is a non-conforming use right now.
Pre-existing.
They, they still.
Pre-existing.
Pre-existing and I think.
But, but, yeah.
I think there's a lot of individual cases that, you know, things that do come up and it's hard to broad brush everything. You know what I mean? And, and trying to nail something down on a bylaw, it's not going to apply to everybody. This goes back to the thirties, I, I would say.
Okay.
He only went as far back as, you know, the forties, but I, we went getting off track here now and.
I don't mean, I don't want to.
What you're saying though, is there's a bunch of defined use, there's a bunch of uses in here. And this one, for some reason, it's not defined. It's one of the only ones that's not defined, so.
We should do it offline, of course.
If there's any others, that would be helpful as well. There's probably a couple more that you can't find.
Well, I'm just, I'm just wondering if it goes by way of special permit. They still need to do site plan review.
I know, I was just, um.
I mean, he has.
It's not a substantial change in the use, so I don't.
Yeah, so, he'd probably just have to go back to John.
Yeah.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
I don't think, I don't think.
You know what I mean?
No, that makes sense. That does make sense.
You're not changing parking.
No. I'm gonna make a note.
Uh, well, we can check tomorrow and see.
Did the inspector make that determination?
Yes.
That authority?
Yeah, he said, he said in the denial, but the denial, denial was, you know, different. He said it in the first denial. And he mentions it in the second.
It's because it was a new use.
When you read it, yeah, because if you read it, it's because of, it's different. So it might not trigger it.
I don't think it could hurt. I don't know.
We gotta always check with John. We'll go back with this forest anyway.
Do you know what page it's on?
Site plan approval, one sixty-five eighty-three. I don't know the players on that.
Seventy-two?
A change in use would require.
Yeah, the change in use would, that's the, but if it's a pre-existing non-conforming, would it?
It's a change in use.
No, it's not. It's an expansion.
Oh, yeah, that's.
Not alteration.
Existing use, expanding off-street parking for.
This is expand.
And we could add a condition to, to have site plan review if.
Building?
If the building inspector determines such, maybe. Yes. That works.
The abutter's property is sixty-eight West Main Street. Is that, is that right?
I take you working on the motion for our special permit?
Yeah, I'm just looking at the condition. I think each one of these. I don't think this board so much cares about the dollar value that's been agreed to, but that the items in here are gonna actually be installed and maintained. So how that gets done, it'd be on you guys. But you already agreed to do that, so I don't think.
Yeah, yeah.
In other words, you're agreeing to basically install a sound barrier fence to be placed on the sixty-eight West Main Street side of the property. Install reasonable screening on the seventy West Main Street side of the fence to reduce noise. Place no loitering signs at the property, particularly on the rear of the property furthest from the street, and to install video monitoring on the sides of the lot to discourage loitering.
That sounds good.
Does that sound right?
And, and the reason it was done that way also is that my experience is, just in their own self-interest, they're gonna put up the best gull down sound barrier that possibly can. So you don't have the conflict between me putting it up and them putting it up, so.
Just that no further changes can be made to the property without reapplication before the zoning board. Site plan review by the planning board to be acquired if determined by the building inspector.
Do you want to even mention like exhibit A in there?
Well, I'm, you know, this one instead.
All right, good, okay.
Yeah, exhibit two five, right?
Would they even need to be mentioned in that though? But we'll, we'll do it anyways. We can do it afterwards.
Yeah, this is just the existing structure, which is gonna be modified, so they're gonna make changes to that. Am I working on a motion?
You are working on a motion. That's exactly what you're doing.
Doing a fine job.
That's why we're all looking at you. We're waiting.
All right, I wasn't ready for this.
Well, the other option is to let the lawyer write it up.
We always liked that option.
Just get my addresses straight.
Sixty-five, fifty-nine.
Sixty-five, seventy-nine?
Eight through D.
Eight through D.
I wrote it on the, he's got it right here. Yeah.
Look at A through D section pen.
One sixty-five, seventy-nine.
Uh, sixty-five, seventy-nine. Right here?
Yeah, I see it there, but.
No, I didn't because I went the other way.
I thought it was gonna be a variance.
I went left.
Seventy-nine, eight through D, and then one sixty-five, ninety-four.
Seventy, is it one sixty-five, seventy-nine?
Yeah, right here.
Let's see. I'd like to move that this board find that the application for seventy West Main Street, that the proposed use is substantially similar to the existing non-conforming use and is being altered by the applicant. I further move that the board grant special permit to the petitioner, Mohammed Jamater of Malden, Mass. And owner Constantina Bernakis, is that right? Of five Fazio Farm Road, Georgetown, Mass. Special permit for retail sales and services use in the industrial A district. Finding that the applicant met the prerequisites necessary to grant special permit for change in pre-existing non-conforming use. Further, I find that the board find that per one sixty-five, ninety-seven, that the requested use is.
One sixty-five, ninety-four.
Ninety-four, excuse me, that the requested use is not substantially more detrimental than existing non-conforming use to the neighborhood. Further, that the board find that per section one sixty-five, seventy-nine, requested use is essential or desirable to the public convenience or welfare. The requested use will not overload any public water or other municipal systems so as to unduly subject any areas to hazards affecting health, safety, or the general welfare. The requested use will not impair the integrity or character of the district or adjoining districts. The requested use will not cause an excess of that particular use, which could be detrimental to the character of the neighborhood. With the following conditions. Condition one, the applicant construct a sound barrier fence to be placed on the sixty-eight West Main Street side of the property. Number two. The applicant, petitioner, excuse me, the petitioner, install reasonable screening on the seventy West Main Street side.
No, not petitioner, applicant.
The applicant, sorry, install reasonable screening on the seventy West Main Street side of the fence to reduce noise. Number three, that they, the applicant place no loitering signs at the property, particularly on the rear of the property furthest from the street. Number four, the applicant install video monitoring on the sides of the lot to discourage loitering. That was four, right?
Mm-hmm.
Number five, that no further changes to the use shall be allowed without reapplication before the zoning board appeals. Number six, that site plan review by the planning board, if determined by the building inspector. If I could hold that for a moment. What are the planned operating hours? Did we discuss that?
They were the same. Are there any others?
Six to eleven. Six to eleven.
Six AM to eleven, three AM to sixteen AM.
And I think, were you gonna put the bushes on your property or do you want it on?
Uh, well, it's on the seventy side.
So you want it on the seventy side?
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
Just checking. Operating hours?
Do we need to add anything about removing the existing restaurant equipment? As part of the condition. I mean, they said they were doing, they said they were doing the demo anyways.
Yeah, I just wanted to catch the operating hours.
Operating hours be limited to.
Six to eleven.
Yeah, six AM to eleven.
Yeah, they, she said the hours were gonna stay the same. I think it was six to eleven.
Other condition, that the operating hours be restricted to no, no greater than six AM to eleven PM or, you know, less.
Not to exceed.
You can close early, but you can't stay open late.
No, no, we never, no plan to open late, but we can close early, yeah, definitely.
Uh, okay, dude, sorry.
That would be seven?
Yeah.
Six AM to eleven PM.
No, that would be number seven.
Number seven, okay. Sorry, I'm making a motion.
So no earlier than six AM and no later than eleven?
I lost the note.
No earlier than six AM and no later than eleven PM, thank you. Okay, Pat.
Is this, there were existing restaurant equipment be removed?
That's fair enough. No, all existing restaurant equipment to be removed.
I have it. Thank you.
Okay. And which, which couples with the fact that they can't then go make further changes down the road to flip back to a restaurant without coming back here. The fan can't go back in, the frigillators and that stuff.
The fan, I don't think you took out.
What do you have for four? I have loitering signs twice of loitering.
Video monitoring on the sides of the lot.
What number do you have that on?
Four.
Okay, that's right.
Comfortable with that? I'm just waiting for Patty.
There's no changes. They have to come back to us if, I missed that one.
It's a change. Well. If you've determined by the building inspector, the applicant shall go to site plan, go to the planning board for site plan review. Did you change that in the, okay.
I thought you had one that said no changes, no, no changes without coming back to.
That's correct.
These conditions.
Did you have a, the video, the video monitoring installed where?
On the sides of the lot to discourage loitering.
Okay. That's right. Second.
Nicely done. Discussion. Any just further discussion?
Got very quiet.
I'm good.
Nice job, Jeff.
I'm good.
Anyone, oh, I'm gonna go one at a time, because I had never, not mentioned who the members of the board were voting on this. So we're gonna do it one at a time. Sharon Freeman?
Yes.
Gina Tebow?
Yes.
Jeff Moore?
Yes.
Dave Kaptus?
Hi.
And Paul Shillen, the chairman, yes. It's unanimous. There, nice job. It's one more step in life.
The motion.
Motion to close?
Close.
Motion to close?
Second?
Second.
Hello's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we'd like to take a brief recess. If we could get the video to be turned off, please.
Thank you.
Why don't you bring us up to speed for, for the cameras?
Okay.
As to where we are for, for right now. I know we've been continued from an existing plan that you had given us, and there was some discussion of making some changes, so why don't you bring us up to speed, please?
Sure. The name is Chairman and other members of board. For the record, John Smolak, attorney for the applicant Mr. Realty Trust. With me this evening is Constantine Scavano, trustee of Mr. Realty Trust, the applicant and petitioner. Since our last meeting, actually at our last meeting, we had discussed the possibility of putting together a subcommittee of one or possibly two members of the board of appeals, and that was discussed with the town administrator. And I guess that is not an option at this time, although that is being potentially revisited. We, since our last meeting, we also had a informal discussion with the building inspector as well as the town planner to discuss various site issues and, and in terms of the process. And also, since that time, we've made some revisions to the site plan, and we're here tonight to discuss conceptually what we are looking at based on the changes that were, or I guess the issues that were identified at the last hearing. So if you could let me just run through these quickly on the plan.
This is the existing conditions plan, as you recall. When we first started the process, we were looking at the installation of the septic system and the retaining wall, and as a result, the concerns about the retaining wall, these would be sixty East Main Street, we went to the next step to explore the possibility of acquiring the adjacent property, which we have under, continue to have under agreement. This is the plan that we presented at the last hearing, as you recall, with the modification of the front area, providing parking, the septic system, serving both uses to the rear, and maintaining the existing house. There was discussion about maintaining the existing house and removing that house. And so, at that, at that meeting, as you recall, we discussed maintaining the house and looking at what other options we can explore to evaluate how we can mitigate any potential impact the surrounding neighborhood and, and to enhance the aesthetics. This is a revised plan which does a couple of things. First, it restores the existing driveway to the historic house. Secondly, what it does, it moves the septic system forward, but moves parking that was in this area, moves it to the rear, as was suggested as a proposed option. That is the major change from the last meeting. There was a concern about parking being, as you recall, parking stacked in the front because it might take away from the aesthetics along Route 133. So we've taken that into consideration, restored landscaping in this area, and again, moved the system slightly forward to accommodate parking in the rear, which, as you know, is behind which is that switching station. And so we think that this minimizes the impact that was originally discussed in terms of parking. Again, this is a discussion piece. We're certainly willing to entertain any input that you have on this or comments on this. I know it's, you're just seeing it tonight, so.
I just have one question. As you know, the trees are important to me.
Right.
And they're not really showed, and I don't know if that's just, it's...
Oh, in this area?
No, in front.
On the front, yeah.
There's the one big Christmas tree, okay.
Stained. Stained. That's why we'll put it in the back.
Okay, and I just, they're not depicted there?
Correct.
But I just, I figured that was just not on purpose.
When was, when was this done? How long have you had this?
This was, well, I just, I just thought, well, yeah, I'm not sure.
Couple weeks ago?
Couple weeks ago, yeah.
Something like that.
I just wonder why, you know, as part of our process?
Right.
We request that we be given, you know, any revision, any plans, drawings to review.
Right.
You know, we'd like, like seven days to review them.
Right.
And we've had them for a couple of weeks. I mean, personally, you know, I have an issue with this now, that I'm seeing this for the first time, and you know what? I can't see them from here.
Right.
Okay, well, you've had a couple of weeks. You, you could have complied with our request. It's not a demand.
Right.
But it is a request.
Well, the reason why we hadn't submitted the materials to the board was because we just had last week a meeting with the billions, with the billion inspector and the planner, and wanted to discuss these before rolling them out. That's...
Plans are available when you had the meeting with the building inspector and the planner, correct?
They were.
And you didn't provide them then to the building inspector or the town planner, correct?
We had a discussion with them, we had them in front of us.
I met with John afterwards.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, he, he had no idea what was gonna be presented either, or it's being a drawing, seeing a drawing.
Yeah. Well, we, well, we had the discussion with him concerning what we're looking to do and what other options were.
Are there any more drawings underneath that one?
No, this is, again, this is purely...
This is your next, yeah, yeah, I understand.
Yeah, so the only, just to...
Would you like to bring it closer to you?
No. We'll get copies.
Right.
What's the latest on the discussion of combining the two properties and the steps that would be needed to, to do that at this point? And whether, are you still, is it still necessary to get a variance to do this as it's tied to the one total property? How is this, what's, what's the latest feedback from, from the billion inspector and from the town planner you met with?
Yeah, and they, they didn't provide us feedback on that particular issue. I mean, there are two ways that we can go about this. The first of which is what we had proposed in our memo supporting the application and petition, which was that the intention is to combine both lots, and if approval is granted, then we would go and seek A and R endorsement of the plan that would combine both lots. The other alternative is to close in the property and acquire it, but that's a significant financial risk, because if we were to combine it, come back to you, and the board doesn't agree with it, two problems. Now we have adjacent residential property that we can't redevelop, number one, and number two, we have existing, pre-existing nonconformities that on both lots that may even be impacted as a result of trying to undo those lots. So it's really a form over substance issue. I mean, if you combine both lots, you're establishing hardship with respect to the lot.
What's a pre-existing nonconforming issue with the, with that, right? Is it too close to the property line?
What?
With the residence?
The residence?
Yeah, is that the...
Yeah, it's a, it's a, yeah, it's a setback issue.
Yeah.
So. And obviously, on the other parcel is the exist, pre-existing nonconforming uses and structure and the like.
Yeah, and I happen to notice there was a comment from the, from the town planner that he, he recommended that you go to planning first before us.
That was, I mean, well, that was a discussion that we, we had, that we may do that. But obviously, I mean, we have a ways to go. We're just trying to see what this board may feel in terms of this, of this process, I mean, this proposal. I mean, we've already, the applicant and petitioner has already spent thousands of dollars to, to come up with different iterations of plans.
About eighty thousand.
And...
Just to excuse me.
Sure.
In site plan approval, you have to finish with the zoning board before you can apply for site plan approval.
It's reasonable. I mean, you're looking for an up or down vote before you go too far in the process.
Well, yeah, I mean, I mean, the other, the other...
I mean, it's reasonable request.
Yeah, the, the other comment that was, that was made by the town planner was, he wanted the park...
Well, we, well, we had the discussion with him concerning what we're looking to do and what other options were.
Are there any more drawings underneath that one?
No, this is, again, this is purely.
This is your next, yeah, yeah. I understand.
Yeah, so the only, just to.
Would you like to bring it closer to you?
No.
No, we'll get copies.
Right.
What's the latest on the discussion of combining the two properties and the steps that would be needed to do that at this point? And whether, are you still, is it still necessary to get a variance to do this as it's tied to the one total property? How is this, what's the latest feedback from, from the building inspector and from the town planner you met with?
Yeah, and they, they didn't provide us feedback on that particular issue. I mean, there are two ways that we can go about this. The first of which is what we had proposed in our memo supporting the application and petition, which was that the intention is to combine both lots. And if approval is granted, then we would go and seek A and R endorsement of the plan that would combine both lots. The other alternative is to close in the property and acquire it. But that's a significant financial risk. Because if we were to combine it, come back to you, and the board doesn't agree with it, two problems. Now, we have adjacent residential property that we can't redevelop, number one, and number two, we have existing, pre-existing non-conformities that on both lots that may even be impacted as a result of trying to undo those lots. So it's really a form over substance issue. I mean, if you combine both lots, you're establishing hardship with respect to the lot.
What's a pre-existing non-conforming issue with the, with that? Is it too close to the property line?
What?
With the residence?
The residence?
Yeah, is that?
Yeah, it's a, it's a, yeah, it's a setback issue.
Yeah.
So. And obviously, on the other parcel is the pre-existing non-conforming uses and structure and the like.
Yeah, and I happen to know there was a comment from the, from the town planner that he recommended that you go to planning first before us.
That was, I mean, well, that was a discussion that we had that we may do that. But obviously, I mean, we have a ways to go. We're just trying to see what this board may feel in terms of this, of this process. I mean, this proposal. I mean, we've already, the applicant and petitioner has already spent thousands of dollars to come up with different iterations of plans.
About eighty thousand.
And.
Just to excuse me.
Sure.
In site plan approval, you have to finish with the zoning board before you can apply for site plan approval.
It's reasonable. I mean, you're looking for an up or down vote before you go too far in the process.
Well, yeah, I mean, I mean, the other, the other.
I mean, it's reasonable request.
Yeah, the other comment that was, that was made by the town planner was he wanted the parking up front.
And conservation, wants the parking in the front. So we'd like, that's why, we need some clarification.
And so.
Hard to proceed.
Yeah, and so we had a discussion with the town administrator and how to proceed on this, just from a process standpoint. And he's still evaluating it. I mean, ideally, what we would do is have representative of the Board of Appeals, Commission and Planning Board together with the planner and the building inspector, as well as our project team, to discuss the back and forth. I haven't heard back from him yet on that potential issue to resolve.
Sort of requested a.
Similar to what?
Joint meet, yeah, maybe one member of each to.
Right, right, not with all the boards, but just similarly a representative of each of the boards to discuss this. Because frankly, we're in quite a pickle. I mean, we have, we have an existing building that's less than fifty percent occupied. We only have four extra spaces over and above what we're required to have under current zoning, and we need a septic upgrade. And, yeah, I mean, the property's been in this owner since, its ownership's in nineteen ninety-eight. And, I mean, there's a reason why, I mean, there are a lot of reasons why you can't lease it all out. But, but we're hamstrung. We, you know, we, we can't lease it out unless we have the ability to have additional parking or septic capacity.
Hello, Mr. Chairman. My name is Constantine Scovano. We have, we've been empty for a while. I saw a memo, Jeff, if you don't, and we've been like fifty percent unoccupied for a while. And we can't get, we're not getting any calls at all for retail. You know, we had the bike shop, they left. We had some other industrial in the back, they left and all that. The only thing, only things that we get some calls now is a Chinese, a restaurant, a nail salon, and a hair salon. That's it. We're not getting any other calls. We have tried everything. We put different brokers from Boston everywhere. We can't, we're not even getting one. And I'm not asking crazy numbers. I think it's between like fourteen and sixteen dollars a square foot. So it's more than, less than anybody else in town in the property. I mean, it's not the worst shape. And with this proposal, I'm proposing to spend close to two million dollars to fix the front, everything, put some more windows, make it more retail and all that, and I can't get anything.
Well, let me ask you a couple of questions.
Please, sir.
Okay, because, you know, going back with history, and the most recent letter that we have is from the Chief of Police and the Fire Department, you know, and it goes back October two thousand and thirteen. And there hasn't been any effort made to comply with this, and I'd like to know why.
Okay. The thing is, I can, I can, I can, I don't have that information, you know, but what we have back there is the conservation land. We cannot put anything there. We fix a minimum either once or twice a year, bring, bring soil and strain now the back. But in two, three months or less, it becomes again, you know? So now, I don't know if we missed the board on this, we have not fixed it since October, but I could check with my people. Maybe it was fixed and it's still becoming. Now, when it gets thought out this week, next week, we're going to go in. But we cannot put any, anything, any hard thing there.
I understand that.
Because we're so close to conservation.
I understand that, but right now, you know, from coming from the Chief of Police and the Fire Chief, they're at this situation where there's been no response, and he's, you know, notified your representative of this. There have been a couple of other things that, you know, have gone by the wayside over the last ten years or so, you know, and that, you know, like the sign for one thing, you know?
Mr. David.
But I'm, my biggest thing right now is right in front of us, and that's, and that's just so recent, okay?
That's the major thing that we want to fix, that, you know, in the back there with conservation, and mostly from, you can correct me, is the conservation is kind of happy with the stuff that we proposed to do back there to spend a lot of money and do an asphalt, but previous asphalt. That's like fifty percent more cost, you know, to do that. That's the only way to do it. And I would like to maybe check the records and see, maybe from October, we have fixed it. I cannot answer honestly if we have or not.
Well, maybe.
He doesn't know either. My people will do it.
Yeah, I mean, his operations people will do it, but I mean, we're in the middle of a conservation commission process too. So, you know, to start dumping stuff in the middle of the reuse process is an issue.
We've done it before. We've done it many times before, either once or twice a year. But I can get you the exact, I can get you proposal, you know, when we have done it. But maybe, could be like October, we missed it. But we cannot put anything in. Every time we do it, either one or two rains, it goes out again. We have not come up with anything, and to be honest with you, you know, we have, we're doing some of the construction and stuff. So I asked my guy last week, I said, can you figure something out? What can we put back there that will last? Because we have a problem. We have a truck that goes by there. He can't go by there. They're right. I agree.
And we have, we, well, we're before the conservation commission, and we have a solution for it.
The previous pavement, right, yeah.
I mean.
Is that?
And landscaping and fence.
An application is currently being reviewed?
Yeah, depending before the Concom.
Okay.
So the plan, not for the mansion, but for the, for the upgrade of the existing site?
Yeah, surrounding, surrounding the building.
The back. We're spending a lot of money in the back fencing.
Good idea.
We're going to clean up the wetlands.
That's in addition to the requests from Chief of Police and Chief of Fire. This is all part of the new proposal.
Well, that was started before that, that was, the notice of intent was filed before that issue was raised by.
Did you respond to them and let them know, hey, we are working on it?
I spoke with the building inspector about it and.
This wasn't from the building inspector. It's from the Chief of Police and the Fire Chief.
But I spoke with the building inspector about it, and I thought he was, he was satisfied with the response. I didn't know that he wanted me to call the fire.
Did you get a, see a copy of any of this correspondence?
That letter? I just received that.
I was not aware of it. Well, I was not aware of this letter.
That just came in. I think that was, I think it was sent to me today.
Yeah, do we have a?
I can have an answer for you tomorrow.
Do we have a, a letter from October, or was it just all verbal phone calls? It doesn't, it says I contacted.
Well, the letter is dated March, and it references October twenty-third.
Yeah, there was, there was an email.
Of last year? It was an email.
October twenty-third.
And was the, did you respond to the email, or was it all verbal?
I responded to the building inspector about it.
Okay.
Was it, was it, was it animated with John, remember?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, it's been a difficult winter, and it's hard to say whether it would have been practical to put this down or not, but I, I do think that an email or some sort of response would have been.
Who could have missed it? Who could have just missed it?
I would have had a paper trail.
Yeah, I just, I just, you know, it's, it's just out of courtesy.
Oh, of course, sure.
This is some, this is something that the, that both are, you know, the police department and the fire department are concerned about, and.
Oh, yeah. But I think also if we can, we probably, I'll reach out to them. I think that in the past, when they asked us to do back there, we have done, you know, ourselves. And I can get you all the, the times that we have done work back there, but it's just.
It's, it's, this is silly because I walk back there all the time. I've been walking back there for ten years. It's, it's almost always a mess.
Yeah, we can't keep up with it.
Well, you can. You just have to do it more often. So can we just move on from that conversation? I, what, what I do not understand is you bought the property not like a hundred years ago, only twenty years ago, or not even that. And nothing's changed. It's the same building, and you have a new septic system that you put in when you bought the property, or it's, no, not even, like ten years ago. Right? Ten years ago.
I'm not sure when it was the last.
Well, that was a brand-new septic system ten years ago. There's no, there's no cause, there's no need to make it bigger. You made it as big as you could with the property you had. So now you're wanting to expand everything into another property so that you can continue to expand. But you, nothing has changed from the first day you bought that place. It's always been retail. It's always been something there. The market is terrible right now, but that's no reason to move your process into a whole other property.
The reason the property, the septic is an issue is because of the, that's like, I think it's a hardship, and I'm not an attorney.
I understand.
You know, because the water table there is two, two and a half feet.
Well, but it was acceptable to you ten years ago when you put it in. That's what you did with the property that you had, and you were probably very happy with that. You're like, great, we figured out a way to do this.
I don't remember, sir, how it was ten years ago.
Well, ten, yeah, it was about ten years ago, or maybe even less. So.
But it had been empty for a long time.
That cannot be, nothing really has changed that much aside from the fact that the economy has gotten a lot worse. So that's what is driving this. You're trying to find other ways to rent your space, whereas there is empty spaces all over New England.
But is it, but is it a crime to try to?
It's not a crime. Certainly not a crime to try. Absolutely not a crime.
And the reason, and the reason why, and you know the reason why we're looking at the adjacent property.
I, of course I do. Yep, I do. I understand.
It's not for lack of trying, to choose alternatives.
I don't disagree with that either, but the fact of the matter is that you've migrated, for whatever reasons, from a retail plaza with a restaurant to more of a professional building now. You've got Pennsycate Medical in there, you've got the rehab place, and you'd like to have more of that type of client in there. And that's a different type of client than what you, you had in there when you originally purchased the property, or what was allowed when you originally purchased the property, what you were allowed to have essentially. And we've talked about the history here, and it's clouded, but you were allowed a restaurant, really. And then at some point, retail became, it became a retail strip in there. We got the numbers. You were kind enough to kind of lay it out for us. What kind of parking do you need? What kind of septic do you need? Retail doesn't need nearly what these other types of uses have.
But I can't find anything, Jeff.
I understand that, but that's, that's.
For five, six years, it's been empty, fifty percent.
Okay, and there's been vacancies all over town too. The problem I have, and this is no secret, I've seen, you know, I've sent Patty some of my comments because I knew you were going to be talking. I thought it was fair. You didn't understand where I was coming from on this before you spent too much time, you know, going in different directions. I really feel that there isn't a business in town that couldn't make the same argument, frankly, that they don't have enough parking and that they don't have enough septic to expand the way they might want to expand. You know, a good example might be the building downtown where the Little's Block of Shops and Theo's is. You know, they may even say, you know, it'd be great to have a second floor here, multi-use, professional up top, maybe apartments or something. Don't have the septic, don't have the parking. Well, maybe they could buy the residential lot, abutting them up on North Street, tear that house down, expand that way, and do the same thing, and bingo, they might have enough room to make that work. I don't know. But that's, that's the reality of downtown. And, and, you know, we're not here to rezone downtown. It is what it is. And what you're asking for is to have special permission to break the zoning code, to maximize the value of your property, which is, you might have the right to do and the right to try to do, in the process redeveloping an otherwise perfectly conforming, single-family property that I think is frankly pretty iconic and has a tremendous value to the character of the downtown neighborhood. And to me, you know, I know this is, this is better, probably. It's still a raised septic system. It's still paving. It is, without a doubt.
It's not that much raised. It's only like two, three feet, Jeff.
Okay, but I look at that property now, and that is an iconic residential. It's a mixed-use neighborhood. I know you got Napa across the street from you guys. It's a mixed bag, but you can't.
Look what's across the street. Those guys have not done it. When I bought this thing, whatever, nineteen, fifteen years ago, this guy had not spent there fifty years or forty years there. He didn't spend a dollar there. It was a dump. Really, I spent a fortune to, to bring it up what it is there. Except to Mr. Davis' comment about somebody putting the wrong color on the sign. And the other issue I remember very clearly, when we had the exit out, everybody was running over this thing. They were hitting it all the time. And I don't remember exactly, because I'm getting older and I forget, how we changed it, we took it, took the little divider. Everything else, we landscaped it, we kept it clean. I don't think you can talk to the, with a health inspector with all that. I don't think, except for the problem in the back, and I apologize, and I will address it and find out when we did it. I mean, look what I have across the street, and look what I have here. Every time I need to rent this place, I have to come to the board. Most people, when they hear that, they don't want to go through the process and all that to go, to open anything, to, to open, to come to the full board for all that. I understand. I'm a big boy. I know what I bought and all that. And I'm not a developer, and I apologize. I'm getting a little better now, but more, I'm a dunker donuts. The reason I bought it is to put a dunk in there because I looked, I looked for, because I'm from Haven, I grew up in Haven, for a long time here, and I couldn't find anything. So that came available. It didn't. I pushed the guy to sell, and he sold it, you know? And now, I can't rent it. I prefer to have retail. I can't. Nobody wants it. We called everybody.
Yeah, the other, the other thing I, if I may add, is that if the market was going to remain static, we'd still have a supermarket here. And markets always change, and basically, if, as a, as a building owner, you have to understand that what you're looking for is a tenant that'll lease the property. And so certain tenants gravitate to certain properties. And so, you know, I think that, you know, hopefully you're not taking this in a negative way. We're just exploring all options that are possible to try to appease the concerns of the neighborhood and the board because we understand that this is an area that, that the, that the town wants to maintain in sort of the same type of viewscape. So, so, so we understand that. But, and it was loud and clear last meeting. So, you know, again, we're, we're looking at.
We're trying, we're trying everything we can. I don't know what else. That's why we're here now. Tell us what else you want me to do. I'll do anything.
I just have a, I have a question.
But you know something, Jeff? Excuse me. If I stay on my own, you know, and I can put a septic in my own there, and we checked it a little, I could get a probably twenty-eight hundred gallons, but it's going to be made massive retaining walls.
And that's what.
And that's going to, how's that going to look?
And so, so we, so we should look at that and say, all right, then it's worth significantly redeveloping in a budding property that is iconic to town and significantly contributes to the character of the neighborhood. And what you're going to do is significantly deteriorate from that, but that should be allowed? We don't create the zoning. We didn't, the zoning board didn't say you're zoned, you're zoned residential to begin with. Or existing, just a minute.
I'm sorry.
Excuse me, please. Just a minute. I don't mean to get, I'm not, I'm not wound up.
No, 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 I apologize. It's just, I get the grief.
This, this is a, we all do, trust me. You know, this area is, I don't want to say mixed use because that has certain definition to it, but this, the downtown area is spot zoned with a mix of resident, and that's what it is. That is the character of the neighborhood. And frankly, this particular home that you're considering redeveloping, really, and everybody else is going to pine on that as well, to me, adds tremendously to the character. It is one of the nicest homes, frankly, in that, in that whole area. It's got a, it's not just the structure. I know we talked a lot about the structure last time. It's the use. It's a single-family use. It's the open setting. It's the wide lot over there. It's the natural trees and all that kind of stuff. I know you're going to maintain some of that, but it's, you know, that's not going to look like what it looks today. It's going to have an impact, and the impact is going to be detrimental from that standpoint, okay? And you're asking us to give you special permission to break the law because you've got a problem with the, changing the use of your building, essentially, from retail to something else. And like I said, I don't think there's a business in town that can.
If the, if the rest of the boards agree to leave the parking in the back, leave the front, I'm willing to hire somebody that you guys recommend. Because we hire, it costs me five thousand to hire a landscaper, landscape architect, to do it anywhere you want. You put any trees, anything you want in the front. You design anywhere you want all the strip in the front there and the house and all that. I'm, I'm trying to do, to be as flexible as possible on this. The wall, the septic system, it would be, because I like perennials. I go, I'm crazy with perennials, you know? So I said, put all wildflowers, because in the septic, you can't put that many things and all that. But all wildflowers on top and all beautiful, anything in the front, anything I can. The house we're not going to touch. We're going to try to leave it, you know, if I buy it, I'm paying double, almost a double, fifty, seventy percent more than what it's worth as a, as a resident there. So I am willing to leave it as a single, rent it as a single, or maybe in the future, you know, come back to you people, and maybe we can put a doctor or dentist or something like that there if I can't rent it that way. But I'm trying to be as flexible as possible here. I don't know what else. But, but also you got to be giving me a little thing because I look, if you look, we've got to be, if you look at my side, it looks a lot better than what is across the street. How fair is that to me? I should come back to the, to the town and ask to change at least my lot to commercial. Because why shouldn't the other guys get the benefit of all these years?
I'm sorry, you could do that.
I know. But everybody's telling me I got no chance because nobody's going to back me. That's what they're telling me, Jeff.
To change it to commercial?
Yeah. Nobody. Everybody's telling me, I'm smoking something.
And ask for their support on that?
I'm sorry?
Did you present that to the planning board and ask if they?
After, after the thing, we asked and said, I'm smoking something.
We had, we had staff meetings. We had staff meetings.
I'm just curious because you came here with Triad. I looked down and I was like, oh, yeah, Triad Driving School. They were supposed to be one of your people that are moving in.
Yes, they're moving in.
Okay. They are.
Yes.
Just curious.
Yes.
Why did everybody else move out?
I know.
Honestly.
We didn't, we didn't kick them out. They left.
The rates stayed the same and they decided to leave?
They decided to leave. The leases have gone. And, and.
The rates didn't go up at all?
No. I don't remember. I'm sorry. I don't want to, you know, I'm not sure.
Maybe a little bit, I mean.
Probably a little, but I don't know.
I don't know. I don't know. White Street.
I can show you. I don't think it's crazy. I'm sorry?
White Street Paint. I used to go there quite often.
They left.
They didn't, they didn't move. They actually just shut that whole part down.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, they have that one in.
Yeah, they obviously were.
And the bike shop, that was the first one they go. And then there was a big thing. They were paying a lot of money in the back. They had little things. They were doing some, for satellites, some mirrors. And they were paying, but they were very, but that, that company was bought by another company, and they shut it down up here. You know, because they're paying, for the back piece, was paying. It was, they were paying, for the back piece was paying a lot of money.
I don't, I, I think that, like the scheme, I can see that you're trying really hard to please us, and I appreciate that. I just want to say that.
Oh, no, I, I do too.
I don't know if we can.
I have a design background and I can totally, I can totally appreciate racking your brains to come up with yet another solution. The big question I have is the history of this, the recent history of this board is trying to, to really be more specific about when we grant a variance versus when we grant a special permit. It is designed that way so that variance is very hard to get. And the way it is currently set up here, you still will need a variance, correct?
Use.
And the only hardship you can show.
Use variance.
A use variance.
Alright, so I mean.
Oh, on, on, on sixty.
Unless they stay on their property, they need a use variance. And even if they do stay on their property, they may need other modifications to your variance.
Mr. Chairman, the problem is, if, if, I don't want to pay an extra whatever, I don't know, I'm not sure if I should say what I'm paying, but, you know, extra for this piece and doing all that. I would have done a chamber, if, if the water, the levels were not as high as they are now, twenty-five feet, I mean, that is extremely high. I would have done a chamber system underneath my parking lot, and in the, in the precise, in the place that I have the septic system now, I would have been able to do five, six thousand gallons. I'm not able, to me, that's a hardship. I didn't create it, the water table is high.
But you need more parking, that's the problem. That's the problem.
I would have done parking on top with the existing septic system is.
Sure, with a lot line.
And I'm putting some parking in the back under conservation.
Yeah, you can see it.
What is? A lot line? No, I can see it. If I put them on, I won't be able to. I was curious where the lot line was.
It would be, now it's just wild bushes and all that. This will be organized professionally done and all that with landscape.
I know, I know, so then we go back to the, you know, we could potentially go back to your original proposal, which, which, being as cynic that I am, I believe this whole process to get us back to your original proposal. You take us through this big, long, secureness route, back to the original, which is way better than any of the other ones. And I mean that, I don't mean that seriously, but it's, it's, you always wonder what people's agendas are. And, and I, and I always have felt that, though I did not want an elevated septic system, I didn't understand why it couldn't have been tiered with planting on it to, and, and addressed.
Not enough land, and.
I know, it's right on the property line on the front.
On the side.
I, I thought that was worse, I have to be honest.
Yeah, I agree, that's a, to me, that's a.
I don't know how you could ever sell, I mean, that house.
This is only two feet high in the front, and I'll make a stone wall, I don't know what else.
You know, I, I, you know where I stand on the whole variance thing. This is going to be a very, very, very difficult, tough road for me to get comfortable with anything that, that goes off your property. But I, I mean, even if we're talking about this, I think the other boards that are going to have a stake in, in how this works out.
And I think that was.
This could substantially change by the, you know, yeah, all of a sudden it's back to, as you say, they want it in the front. You know, we've got different issues, and this is what happens when, you know, so.
Well, in all honesty, what's happened is that, you know, we started off with a limited area, and then it morphed. I mean, we thought, you know, with the, with the limited area and the septic system on our property, then we would just go to planning board. And then it started morphing and morphing and, and to the property across the street to try to see if we could accommodate any concerns that, that this board had. And now we have a situation where the, the conservation, well, the conservation agent and the planning and town planner would prefer parking up front, which is absolutely the opposite of what you folks had suggested.
It's absurd.
We can get too far in the old, in the original plan here before it got cold.
Right.
I mean, you never, we, we had a lot of questions, but we never had time to digest your proposal that stayed on your property. Yeah, yeah, I mean, there was some, there was some concerns.
The problem, I cannot look to sit here and look at you guys in the eye and tell you that that is not a detriment to the, to the next neighbor, excuse me, putting an eight-foot wall, parking on top. That's awful, I mean, how, I can't.
Actually, I don't think to them it would have been, they had, they got a lot of screen there, but to the street, maybe.
No, no, to them too, I mean, still, even if I did the screening and all that.
They weren't going to take a single tree down. No, I, I don't, I disagree. I mean, they were going to, you could put screening in there, and, I mean, they're pretty far away, and they're going to look at that, that wooded area.
But also on the front, it was a six, seven foot wall too, I think, if I'm not mistaken.
What, what I think was a little disconcerting about, about that plan, as you look on paper, it was okay, but then you realize from the road what you're looking at is a bunch of cars up.
When I saw, when I saw the arrangement that we did, I said, are you kidding me? I, I can't, how can I come and present that there to you guys? That's why I, we're hired, that's why I put it there.
You sold the property on your lot and you.
I can't go one at a time. I know, can, can I ask, you had, you had mentioned that you're trying to put together this subcommittee. Is that to alleviate all of this? Like, so you want planning?
Well, that's, it's.
Bad at back and forth, so.
I feel like, yeah.
We just don't want to be into it, three hundred thousand dollars later, and then find out that we have real problems.
And I feel, I feel that's fair, and, I mean, I know that I, I had volunteered to be on the subcommittee before because I feel like, I feel like you're putting in the effort.
Thank you.
I do. I just don't know if you're going to, if, if the variance thing is going to work, like, if, if it. There's a lot of.
I've been doing this a long, long time, you know. And I've been into a lot, a lot of meetings, lately I have, getting older, so I'm sending my team to go to. But I feel this is so important over here, what is, I'm so tired to be fifty percent empty and all that and not be able to do what I like to do over there. You know, if the board thinks that it's not a major detriment, and to my opinion, what we're proposing here, and I'm willing, what I said before, about let the board hire a consultant, I pay, you know, usually how it happens, to design the front any way that, that the board wants. And the house stays, we try to keep it residential, to rent it to a family or whatever. And the thing, the top there, you wouldn't even notice there. But the other thing, it's, to me, it's, it's tough. You know, it's, it's really tough. This is allowing more money for me. The other way, if I'm going to go to the other way, I don't have to do anything pretty much. I'm not, because I can't, you know, I'm not changing the, the, the building, I'm not changing, not doing anything with conservation in the back. I'm just going to go, go into conservation, because I talked to John, I talked to, to the engineer, and the only thing I need is Title V, whatever.
Oh, if, if we didn't add any parking.
Yeah, we're not going to add any parking.
And we're just expanding the septic system, that wouldn't require any water.
Are you needing parking though?
I need, what am I going to do?
You're adding fifteen spots in the back.
No, we're not, we're not going to add.
If we did not add any parking. And we were just simply upgrading our system, we wouldn't be before this board.
Oh, yeah, sure. On, on your own, on your.
And the building inspector confirmed.
Yeah, right, 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 sure.
With this, with the six-foot wall or whatever.
Yeah.
Eight sometimes. And, and the building inspector confirmed that, that, that's not a structure, so I can do it. But I don't want to do that. First, I'm not getting exactly what I want. I know this is costing me a lot more money, but, you know, my hands are tied that way, so.
Well, I, I, what Jeff mentioned earlier is that the, the other boards clearly are going to have other opinions about this. It needs to happen that board members, you, you need to have a public meeting with, with different board members and just, I would love to know what the other issues are, and I would love to hear someone else say, that is a great idea. Because this, this, uh, commercial, well, not, well, this, this building needs more parking, it needs to be upgraded. It will be better for the town, and I think if you did all the upgrades to it, it definitely would be. And I picture like the plazas and stuff down in Lexington and Concording, you know.
Binfield.
Yeah, and it really can be done very tastefully. And I've seen how they do these little bump-out parkings in various areas and it's sort of woodland around them, and I, 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 I just, again, I, and, and I would say that the, the hardship could possibly be that because of the water table on your property, you cannot put in a decent septic system. Because you can put that underneath your whole parking lot, but you can't.
I can, because the, where, where my septic system is, I mean, look at it, where my septic system is, I can put a row of parking, I don't have to buy the other piece, it's cheaper for me, or I can put a row of parking here, and I can put all this septic system, chamber system.
But you can't because you're in the water.
So, I don't know, if that's not a hardship, I don't know what, what it is. You know? The thing is, I think is, it, what I was trying to finish before, and I won't off track like usual, but, you know, if the board really, I think that the, the variance, and I'm not an attorney, you know, do one, two lots, one lot and all that, if the board wants to help, it can overcome that because of the hardship of what the water is. If we have the blessing of the board to continue with that, we're not going to do something the other boards are not going to do. The only thing that you guys got to work out is where you want the parking, front or back, so.
I know, but that, that matters, I, I think it matters a lot to the town's people, you know.
I'm, I'm not buying it, but quite honestly, I'm not, I'm not convinced that this, I, I still think that this is an existing non-conforming use. If this were zoned, commercial, in, in the uses that you are planning on, I know you have the right to do them now because we cleaned up, you know, some of the previous documents that allows you to do this. If it was zoned that way, and you could do any of those uses by right because it's zoned properly, and you can't use that lot for which it's zoned, and you've got this issue, you know, I might feel a little differently about it.
It's an existing non-conformity.
It's, you know, the only reason you have the right to use this even for a doctor's office is because we helped you out three months ago, and that's been in there all this time. I won't say illegally, but, you know, I, I don't know how all those uses ended up being there to begin with, but we granted it because we want, recognizing that there was some history and it was clouded, we decided that we'd allow you to, to clean up your right to use this property in a flexible manner, as far as the tenants, with the condition that you recognize the site has limitations in terms of parking and septic. We knew, we talked about it. And, and you've got to, and we said, we got to manage that, and you're going to have to, and even to the extent that units will have to go empty. It says it right in the decision, even to the extent that units will have to go.
I can't put any more doctors. I can't put any retail, I can't put any food. The only thing that's allowing me to put over there is retail, and I don't have, nobody in six years calling, not one.
Go in at the right price, let's face it. I mean, I don't know what your rents are over there.
Fourteen, sixteen bucks a foot.
People are, people are filling up across the street, they're going in there.
Fourteen, sixteen. That's, I, you know.
I don't, look, I'm not, it's not my business, but I can just, common sense tells me there's some supply and demand. There's no demand at all, that, you know, it doesn't matter, but the right price, somebody will go in there. And you've got, I don't know what you've got for parking spaces left, but you maxed out because you've got the PT place in there, and the doctor's office.
The PT, yeah, the, they don't use any water, the PT, because they don't have, they don't have no, no whirlpool, nothing in there, no showers, nothing. So they're most like retail.
Okay, well, I don't know, whatever you're, whatever you've got a lot for them, that's for you guys to manage, and you're, you know, you've got people that understand exactly what you can and can't do, but, you know, what I'm getting at is, you'd like to convert this all over to one particular use that requires a lot of what you don't have. So, you know, you're creating, you're creating your own problem here by desiring, you know, you want to maximize your investment, I get it. I'm a business guy too.
But the board has the, the, there is a hardship, the, the hot water table, that's what's causing the hardship. So the, if I'm not, I'm not returning again, by that alone, the board, if they want to, they can, they can grant this. I mean, I'm not making it a detriment to the neighborhood and all that.
I disagree, I think, I think redeveloping a perfectly conforming, uh, iconic home that contributes significantly to the character of the neighborhood is, is detrimental. I, I want, I'd like to see that property the way it is now, and I don't see that.
We're not going to change it, we're not going to change the house.
That detriment, what you're trying to say is that your problem supersedes, you know, the town's desire to maintain this type of properties in that area. And I'm saying, I don't agree with that, simple as that, I don't, I don't. In this case, now, I appreciate that the place has been upgraded, it looks good. I, if you can come up with a way to, you know, keep this on your property, or at least, you know, I don't keep the parking on your property. You know, if you carve off a little piece to put the septic over there and put a deed restriction, leaving the thing as a, as a residential home or something, keep all the parking on, you know, maybe, I don't know, you could think through it, but if you needed a dimensional variance to, to move things over closer to your lot line or something, I'd be willing to, to think about it, but, you know, you're asking to completely redevelop. You know, I've said it a hundred times, it's that, that property is, is something that I think Georgetown needs to maintain more of. That's, that's the bottom line. And, and your proposal, although it solves your problem, to me overall is not necessarily beneficial to Georgetown.
The back of the piece of property is grass. The only thing that's going to be raised, it's going to be now, instead of grass, it's going to be flowers, and it's going to be going to raise two feet. Nobody's going to see what's underneath, you know, so, I mean, the board also wants business in town, you know. And I try to, I pay a lot of taxes, I employ people around and all that. The board is not unreasonable, what I'm asking, request to, to, to go out of their way a little, because I, I go through this a lot, and I see, like I said before, if the town wants to be helpful, what I'm asking is not unreasonable. If they just don't want to do it, you know, I, but it's not fair because I'm not changing the house. Somebody that comes by up, up and down the street, if they're looking on the right and see all the junk that's there it's been years, and the board, they got, you know, looks terrible, and then I, I'm across the street, and mine looks a hundred percent better. I should get a little benefit. Those guys, they weren't in, you know, because this commercial, they don't have to go through this, spend eighty, ninety thousand dollars just to, to come onto here, I don't think I'm unreasonable. I think the board should have be, be a little more reasonable with me and help me out a little. Because I think I've been a good.
And you know, you can go to the town and ask to have it rezoned.
You're making an effort now, okay, because this is.
I don't know what else, David.
So much better than what we, what we presented the last time, okay? I would have liked more time to see it.
I, we apologize.
I would also suggest, you know, that for me, and I, and I, and I know I can speak for Paul because he's so much into design, and I know it's, it's actually a big deal for all of us, but to look at this and say, alright, well, what is going to be the actual difference? Show me what, how that lot is going to change, how it's going to be affected. I can't tell by this, and Jeff just brought up a good point. You know what? That is a beautiful piece of property, we want to see it maintained, okay? And looking at it from here like this, we can't tell, I can't tell it's up two feet. I can't tell what it's taken away for vegetation.
We did it for last time.
You know.
Right.
But it was the parking.
Right.
The other way.
And, and, yeah, we apologize that we didn't get the plan out.
And you want to see this with a lot more detail because.
Well, that's what we're here tonight.
We're not here to try to, you know, say, no, you listen, we're a hundred percent against you, okay? We're here to say, listen, we have a job to do, protect the town, protect the way people are.
Because they still need to get into the next property. Just asking about rezoning it to commercial, I'm just saying, you'd have to rezone the other property too, right?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm just saying that the, the use that they're trying to use isn't even by rights, it was by special permission as it was, that's all I'm saying, is this is zoned residential to begin with, so to, you know.
Put a zone both.
Like, that's what you said, they, they know exactly, you know, he knew exactly what he was buying, you know, we've talked about it, I knew exactly what he was getting into.
Well, I didn't know.
Exactly what the size was, well, at some point.
It doesn't matter, it's my fault.
Well, no, it's, it's a risk you took, and it's fine, you know, you invested in the town, and that's, that's good, but I mean, the fact is.
I didn't know that I would have this kind of year, I would have loved, swear to God, I would never, but, we were young, we started back twenty years, if I knew twenty years what I know today, I would do a lot of things different, you know, but I didn't realize.
Wouldn't we all?
So, but it doesn't matter, hey, it is what it is, you know, I'm there now, so I'm trying to do the best that I can, you know.
So what are the next steps? I, I just, I feel like we're going to go around in four more circles.
Take it to a vote.
Or are you going to try to, were you, what were you, what was your intent coming here tonight? You weren't looking, were you looking for a vote tonight, or were you looking for?
I came here tonight to understand myself for what's going on and all that.
Yeah.
And to see what else we can give or, to work together that make everybody happy here tonight. And then we'll also see what the boards, the other boards can live with. You know, the planning board can suggest stuff, but, you know, they, they cannot deny. You people can deny, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken with it.
You can deny it.
They can, we can put restrictions. So, the most critical board is to us, I would think, is this board. And we wanna make sure, you know, to hear exactly, we did what you asked us last time, I don't know what else to do. You know, and that's, this is because we couldn't do the private, you know, the outside thing, the, the meeting, the. So I figure we'll do it tonight, that's why.
Are you thinking about having this meeting before our vote or are you thinking?
Well, I think that, well, a couple of things, if. No, it's, it's just that if there's absolutely no way that we cannot get a vote. To use that adjacent parcel, we need to know that, but if there are ways. But if the board's willing to listen and hear this out a little bit more based on further feedback from the planning board and the like. To see if we can come up with something, I mean, I, again, we don't wanna prolong this agony, you know?
Well, I think you're back to what the recommendation was of the town planner, which was you kinda go to them first and get some feedback. I mean, I'll be honest with you, you vote tonight, I'm voting no. I'm, I'm sorry, but that's just the way it is and I've explained myself a hundred times on this, I'm not, I'm not comfortable with this concept. You know, if you go back to planning or you have a, a meeting of the mind, so to speak, that. People really feel encouraged about this project in general, I mean, I listened to other boards too, I'm not sitting here, you know, in a, in a shell. Saying I don't care what they think, I, you know, I'm gonna stick to the guns here, I mean, I, I know, I kinda hear what's going on, all right? And there's not a lot of people that are very much in favor of this whole concept that I'm aware of, so I know there's issues out there. And the issues are in some cases minor, in some cases they're major and I don't think. I'm the only one that's got some major concerns with, with the overall thing, maybe coming from a little bit different perspective, okay? But, you know, if, if, if you go in, whether it's an official hearing or whether you have subcommittee meetings. And, and you're getting some really good feedback from people, you know, I'm willing to listen to that. If there's a ton of benefits and and very little detriment and overall, you know, it's gonna be a great thing for the town. I'm for it, I, I don't disagree with the upgrades, I mean, I, I'm really concerned about the, the existing property being redeveloped, period. I don't think that a use variance over there is, is the right way to go, um at least with the plans I've seen. But, you know, all the rest of this stuff, as we said from the original meeting, I think you had some great proposals and you had some good reinvestment in your own property. And, you know, I thought, I thought it was all very well done.
Can you condition a use variance?
Of course. Uh you can't, you can't condition it for time of, uh in ownership, but you can condition it.
For what they can do.
So let's say if the house next door comes to you and they wanna do something, you know, to put a medical office there. How would that, how, how would that be handled, just curious?
That would be a use variance.
The same way, right?
A use variance, yeah.
So I'm trying to understand, I'm a little slow, getting older. What is the, the number one issue that you have, Jeff, because I'm not clear, is it because we combined the two lots?
It's the, it's the concept of the use variance altogether, okay, that lot to me. If you had, if you had, uh, your lot and you wanted to do something else with your lot, we just, we just kinda talked about it in a previous hearing, it's completely unrelated, I don't wanna compare. But it was a situation where, you know, they had their, their lot and we determined that, you know, they could do a similar use. In fact, we did it with you not too long ago, changed the uses, okay, worked with you on it. This lot, the residential lot, is perfectly conforming in every way, it is zoned residential. Uh and that zoning is not made by us, it was made by the people of Georgetown. Who determine, you know how it is, I mean, it's, it's it, you get a picture of what, everything is owned and that's it. So our role is to, is to preserve that zoning, except in, in very unique special circumstances. Where we can, under very certain circumstances with the use variance, give you per, per, special permission to be exempt from the law. So what you're asking is for us to exempt you from the law, well, in this case. Uh, you know, you were asking what would they have to do to get a use variance on, on that lot, they'd have to prove that that lot essentially. Is unusable as a residence or for some other reason, they can't, they can't use it for the, for the purposes in which it's zoned, essentially for. And, uh, again, there's been a nice home there for a hundred years, however long it's been there and it's, it's a tough argument. And, you know, that's, that's where I'm coming from, I think that that particular lot has been used. Extremely well for the purposes for which it's zoned for a long, long time. And you're, you know, effectively what you're asking to do is to. Uh impose your problem, your financial problem on to another lot. And you're asking for exemption from the law to use that lot now for a different purpose than what it's zoned for. And to me, again, I, you could, if, if, if we think that that's a good idea around town, you could do that in a lot of cases. You really, I mean, you could, if, if that's the way people wanna go. I could be wrong and if, and others in town, as you discuss it, may, may, you know, completely disagree with me and that's fine.
That's the reason we're here, you asked, I mean, as we are because of Sharon and. We need the four votes, so. I'm sorry to the rest of the board, I don't know how they voted, that's, it's, it's decide yourself, then there's no need for me to continue here, to do anything. If I can, if you, if that's what, how you feel and you're right and you're privy or whatever, then this, then might, might as well withdraw and, and do on my own lot. Because I don't wanna keep wasting, I mean, that's why I came, to be honest, John was not the idea of coming tonight, you know?
This is why I presented my comments also between hearings, so that you understood, where knowing that there's only four of us here. I mean, it's only, maybe nice here, but I mean, I. And I don't, the other members may agree with me, disagree with me, I don't, I don't know, but.
But we need four, so it's not like, you know, I have, you know, five, six to, so if one, Mr. Chairman, if one cannot. Is persuaded to change because of his belief, then. I don't know what else to do.
That's the problem with Georgetown and this, and the size of this board, I mean, we just don't have enough volunteers here, we should have seven people here. Eight even, and it makes it really, really hard.
You could just wait me out, I'm not gonna be here forever, you know?
I think it's a good project, of course I'm prejudiced, but I'm trying everything I can. You're a designer, I guess. I don't know what else to do, you know, Mr. Chairman.
I do, but I. It doesn't matter what. I'm more of a problem solver, I don't, I don't have a closed mind towards it, but it doesn't matter. As it is right now, I could never vote for it right now, cause I really would like to know what other people think and I would like the community to be involved in this. But it's real, it's a no-brainer from the onset of, we, you know, I am restoring an old antique house. Right down the street, like four ha- four buildings down. And I'm not putting all that effort into that house so that that house can become something different than it is, that's the problem. That's why we moved to Georgetown is because of these old properties, so. So the way it is currently right now, I, I, you know, I would, I would vote no as well, but I would, I know. That there are many towns around New England that get, that work through these issues and find some happy medium. I don't know how to do that necessarily to convince this board entirely. I don't know how that all works because you, can I be persuaded? It's very difficult because it, they need a, a use variance and we don't like giving those away for. Unless it absolutely is necessary, so I, it's, it's.
But, Mr. Chairman, and I don't, please, don't, I don't wanna be disrespectful, but my other choice, you leave me no choice. But to put a, and a full, a full wall.
Well, that is, that is oftentimes a conversation that, that this board talks about, is it, all right, fine, if, if I can't get this, then the only alternative is that. And that's.
Please do, don't take it as the wrong.
We're all grownups here, I know what the reality is and I, I.
I just don't wanna abandon the fact that this person is here working with us to try to do something to preserve the house. Which on day one I said, don't knock that house down, like I said, and don't change it, I don't want anything changed, I want the front just saying.
You can put in another decision.
Well, but my point is, I think you've done everything that we've asked and I don't want you to abandon it until you, maybe. You're saying public meeting or other boards, like I, I don't know how much time and money you wanna spend.
The agreement is out by May.
So I just, I don't know, I just don't know if you had a public hearing and you had other people in, in Sharon's. You know, people in the neighborhood and see what other people say, cause.
To have a hearing is gonna be going through the, the, the board process, yeah, but I think what you're talking about is having a little bit more of a meeting of the minds. Which is tough, because now you got one representative who may feel, now you feel you got buy-in from the boards, you come to the board, you get a big, you might get a different.
That's the risk of a subcommittee.
But, but at least if that goes for several months, you get collective feedback.
I mean, my fear, and I'm gonna be, I will puke if an eight-foot wall goes in against that. I, I will be so disappointed in this board.
I, I have to agree with you.
That would make me ill.
Okay, and then I would think, you know, shame on us for not saying, all right, hey, listen, it's either A or B and there are no other options. Okay, and yep, we can be adamant, we don't like this, we don't, but, oh my God, what did we do instead? That would be my, that would be a big deal.
Gonna do that, cause he's a classy guy and it's not gonna happen.
And he's working with us, but that's my point.
I know that there are ways of building eight-foot walls that look a hell of a lot better than other ways of doing it.
He doesn't have that much room.
Well, I bet there are ways of doing it, I don't know exactly what they are, but I think there are. But the other thing is, you know, you've gotta look back and say, okay, what happens if he sells the whole property, doesn't do anything to it, sells the whole thing. And it becomes some nice little.
That's why we condition it.
Well, it could be, but it could be something else that is fully used as one business, that is perfectly comfortable there. And doesn't need the extra septic system, there, there are other business options with that building.
Such as what in a residential area?
No, no, he's got the right to use it now for everything we granted him for. He's now has a variance that allows all those uses.
I hear what you're saying, I guess the only, the only concern is, I mean, if it hasn't been fully occupied for years and years, when, when is that gonna happen, you know, it's.
And, and what if he sells it to somebody who doesn't wanna work with us and puts up?
There could be some light industrial that would go in there and.
Well, that's the thing, I mean, they are, they're buying a house. Probably, I don't, I don't know what the sale is, I couldn't even tell you and I'm not asking you to tell me, but I don't know if they're gonna be able to sell it. To another person who's gonna keep it, the way they keep it. I mean, the way. Impeccably.
I'm sorry?
They take care of that house impeccably, I'm not sure that there's gonna be another person.
We will do the same.
That would take care of it.
Landscape is not that bad. With fifty percent, I'm losing money there and fifty percent, I still keep it.
Trying to move forward, okay, they need help, knowing the next step, okay, cause this is not gonna happen tonight.
And that's what I'm saying, I feel like we need to kind of, we need, we need to be open. To listening and I know you feel very strongly, but I also feel very strongly about a wall. And, and not that we have to butt heads on it, I just feel like.
I respect everybody's opinion.
I feel like we just need to be open, that's the only thing and, and I don't know what it's gonna take. What the next, next steps are.
Well, his next step could very well be going to get approval for doing that system with a wall. Okay, that could be his very next step, he's not, he's not implying a threat.
I know.
Whether it's a viable alternative, whether he can get permission to do that, I don't know, okay?
Can, can I ask?
But.
Sharon?
I don't think so, if it's on his own property.
Eight-foot wall.
We're not gonna put parking, I'm just gonna do a septic.
No parking, just. Just Mount Rushmore. That's what I would do. I would, I would absolutely do that, I would go explore other options and find a better compromise.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Sharon.
You agree?
And not as a board member.
Uh, not as a board member, so I don't understand how you can take two properties and put them together and say that the use variance wouldn't apply. I see Jeff's point, but I also don't see how that, how the use variance can simply be. Because once you make that one whole property, I don't see any hardship, I don't see any, I don't see it beating any of the criteria. That would be required, that would allow it in the first place, but let that be. The septic and the wall, so the things that, that I think about with the septic, I, I think it was like six thousand gallons, I don't remember.
Yeah, that was proposed.
Huge, can this town, if you think bigger picture, can we, can this town afford that kind of drain in the water resource? I don't know, I don't even know if that's part of his board.
Well, they can't, uh, it may not even need to be that big, if they can't put additional parking on top of it, then they, then the system can be downsized, I know.
But just think about what they proposed the last time, six thousand gallons.
I know.
We already have a water issue, we already have, we already have bans, we already have all kinds of things with too much water being drained out of the park room now. So, that's a different issue, and then if you raise the septic that high, from my house, no, I can't see it. But I would be really concerned for the people who live next door because that's, that could very probably be a detriment. Cause they're lower than them, but.
And from the front.
And from the front, but where, where does that leave you? You don't want a business to leave town, they do take good care of it, but does that justify all of this? I don't know, I really don't.
Well, I don't even think we're qualified to make that determination, determination on what impact it has on the water system. I know I'm not qualified.
I don't know which board does that. But that really should be one of the things that they're thinking about is overall, just for this town.
I mean, I would tell you point blank too, in order to get my comfort level, I'd wanna see something a lot more concrete, I wanna see your option, okay? But I'd also wanna see that you complied with every condition now and previous, okay? Because at one point we said, you know, show me a leap of good faith, well, those leaps, the best way to predict future behavior is by past behavior. And that's what I would wanna see.
It like, which one, sign?
Even going back to sign, I mean, I, I remember about, you know, the fifty-foot driveways, uh, and now the parking lot is the most, I mean, the drive around on the back's the most recent issue.
The next couple of days or two, figure out when we did it last and all that, get you some records and, and all that. And I think, and I'll talk to the inspectors to see if we can get that we have complied in the past as, I think, most of the time.
I'd also touch base with the chief of police and the fire chief too, let them know that you're serious about compliance with, with their requests.
I don't wanna spend because to do the landscaping plan and the, the renderings that we had, that, that, they had last time was five thousand dollars. I wasn't gonna spend another two, three thousand, do more renderings for the front and back when, when the board's going back and forth, which, where they want the parking, you know? So, I mean, that's a lot of money.
Well, I think you, you got a better feel for where we're, where we're at today. This mostly complied with our board with, the biggest issue back then was everybody hated the parking in the front and the trees gone. Okay, that was a big deal last meeting.
It needs to look the same, it needs to look the same, is the way I look at it. From like driving by or walking by, walking by, if I was to walk to Dunkin' Donuts from Sharon's house.
I am willing to allow the board to hire their own arc, you know.
But, I mean, you know what our concerns are, you know what Jeff's concern is, I think, where do we go, what's the next step?
I feel like the only option we have right now is for, for, not to continue, but for you to withdraw without prejudice and then figure out a. A, a different way around this, um, I don't know, because clearly we either need to vote on it or continue and you don't wanna vote on it. So if you withdraw without prejudice, at least you've got a real, you know what the temperature of the water is big time.
And then if, and if he withdraws, can they do, um. Could they do any subcommittees they wanted?
He also said he was, he was, he was waiting to hear back again from town council or he went back to town council.
Did not recommend, strongly did not recommend.
But if there's not a hearing open, if he withdraws.
You've been working with him on that.
You're talking about merits of a case outside the public hearing.
But my point is if he was to withdraw without prejudice, there's no more public hearing. So we could have any sort of meetings we wanted to have, correct?
I think you can probably answer that, cause you've obviously spent some time.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I think in the, in the towns that I've worked in, over the past twenty years, I've never seen a, a, a town not appoint a subcommittee with a. Board member on it, you know, when we've asked to do that.
More than two.
Right, right.
Not in the middle of a public hearing, I think was another issue.
No, not at all, not an issue, um, as far as what I've seen.
I think it needs to be open to the public, I think.
No, 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 in the middle of this hearing, I'm suggesting that while you're in the middle of this hearing to then discuss the.
You can go to. Planning and they do like a pre-applica- like a, a review or a.
They don't allow pre-application conferences. Based on the discussion that we had with the town planner at the last meeting. They do not allow informals, they want live.
They changed that in the last couple of months because they were doing it a while ago.
Yep, not anymore, so.
The only thing that I'm worried, with, the only thing that, if we go to planning and that plan tells me that I gotta, I, I cannot have. On that new property, any parking, then it makes no sense. There are some things that, you know, I can work and do whatever, but I need the parking to be able to put in, you know, the nail salons or whatever. The business that wanna be in this kind of beautiful little towns, you know, a hair salon, a nail salon, and things like that, that, or small. Who calls us, um, one of the sandwich places that wanted to go in, you know, I can't put any of them, you know, so that's the only thing. Other than I work, I mean, it depends on the board, what happens if I go to the planning and they say, no, we're not gonna approve it if you got this back, back, back in the back. Where, where, where am I gonna go after?
Right, well, I, I, I guess one other option is perhaps we continue for an extended time so that we can have the dialogue.
With the planning?
With planning and conservation, uh, so that we don't withdraw and then if we find that what we're proposing is so substantially different from what. And then if we find that what we're proposing is so substantially different from what we've been discussing, then we withdraw and refile. Uh, as much, as much as, uh, Mr. Scavano's likes being here, you know, he just likes to pay new application fees and, and so on and so forth, and if we come back, we just renotice anyway. I mean, uh, but I would like to sort of, I would like to continue with the hearing rather than...
That's fine. How much more time do we have on this? We just opened this hearing last. This is a...
We need an extension of time.
We had an, an original application, and then we continued it.
It's January, it's January.
No, this is the second.
No, this is the second one. He withdrew the other one, and now this is the second one, but the use...
January twenty-fourth, be filed.
The variance needs an extension of time, 'cause you have to, the hundred days will be coming up. So, you need to ex...
Do we vote that?
If you can, if you continue the hearing, then you need to extend, we got four minutes, extension, do an extension for final action, for a variance. So...
Well, what if we, what if we, uh, we requested a continuance for an additional thirty-day period? And if, you know, within two weeks before that period, we find we're not any closer, then maybe we file a further extension or request for a continuance? I just don't wanna lose a whole month, uh, if we continue to sixty days, and if we, if we could try to get some dialogue.
I think that's fine, and I, getting the dialogue, I don't, I don't know how to do that. I'm not involved in that. But what I do feel is that there is a lot of really intelligent people in this town, and, uh, wh- when they come, when they have an opinion, isn't necessarily convenient. It's, it could be, you know, halfway through the process, or at the beginning, or at the end, I don't know. But there's a lot of people that are volunteers in this town that, that could probably love to hear their opinion, because I think that some of them are very much pro-business, and they're like, there's no option. You've gotta do this. And others are, are, are pro-aesthetic.
Right.
So, um, and I, I, I wanna, I, I don't know how to address the position that, that Jeff has. I'm on the fence. Well, I know, but that's his, and that's, but you know, it's not always that way. Sometimes it's, no, I do.
Oh, yeah.
It's time to bring it up.
But, but the question is, if, you know, there, because there's only four members of the board, it's not really fair. There usually is one member that is not in agreement with something, and, um, I don't know how to get over that hurdle either, either, because I don't think ethically, he should be bullied into changing his mind, not that he would. Um, unless he gets, and being, and bullying is when you say you're gonna build an eight-foot wall instead.
No, I'm, I'm not saying, I'm saying if that happens, no, and I don't think he's saying that, but he, but he has that right.
I understand, but it is an option, and that is...
You have the right to tear your house down, too, but you're not gonna do it.
So, alright, so, um, we're gonna just, uh, let's make a motion to continue this hearing.
You gotta do an extension of time for the variance, so...
I thought we could continue one more month before we had to do that.
With a special permit, but he hasn't, maybe it's gonna be a six ball.
The variance petition as well.
He's got a special, he's got a special permit. He's got a use variance. He's got two modifications. He's got a water resource. But the variance, you have to act within a hundred days, and it's close to a hundred days. So, you need to, an extension of time for just the variance portion of the application.
Sort of motion to extension.
But you, you, well, if you're going to continue the hearing, and then you have to come up with a date, an extension of final action, which includes the, from the, from the date of a hundred days, the hundred day starts from the date it's filed, and includes the fourteen days to write the decision, the twenty-day appeal period, all that. That's included in the hundred days. So, we need to extend the variance for a final action date. In other words, maybe June or Ju, uh, whatever. But this needs to be done tonight, if he's continuing.
I think we have to, um, make a motion to continue the hearing past ten o'clock.
So moved.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Should've said no.
But that could have...
Sorry.
He'll go to ten oh five and no later.
We certainly appreciate you, you know, hearing us out. You know, if there's, if you're telling us there's absolutely, positively, absolutely no way that we could ever convince four members that, uh, we can't do anything on Sixty East Main Street, that's one thing. If there's a glimmer of hope for, based on just further discussions, and, you know, maybe we, you know, make the legal argument, we refine the legal argument, um, then, you know, maybe we, you know, take that, that chance. So, that's, I mean, that's...
That's a possibility, too, yep. Okay, yeah, let's, let's, uh, we need to make a motion to pick a date at which this final action occurs. Patty?
Yeah, so you're gonna continue to next month? Someone's gonna make a motion to continue.
Well, we're gonna continue this hearing, yes?
First.
Alright, that's for the special permit and...
Well, for everything and the variance.
We do everything to go beyond a hundred days.
No, the variance, we gotta...
Well, you continue in the whole hearing. The variance is part of it, so...
I'd like to make a motion to continue the hearing until next month.
Second.
To...
What's the date with that be?
May sixth.
May sixth.
Discussion, anybody?
Yeah, it's gonna suggest we need a date.
Oh, okay.
Second in that, that was Gina.
Who's second in it?
I, I, I have no idea.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then we need to make a date.
Or the variance for the extension of time for final action.
That's something we determine, or is that something they determine?
Well, we've requested.
You wanna...
We're requesting that.
Maybe Dave, Dave, you wanna do it?
So...
Do what?
She needs a motion to...
So, that you wanna push out further, because you...
So, you wanna give that, put that one to June?
To...
Is that long enough? That's final action, so that means we have to have a determination by then.
We can go to July.
Go to June fifteenth for now, I mean, hopefully.
That gives us two more hearings.
Well... You can do...
Does that work?
Yeah, that works for us.
Okay.
June, what'd you say?
Fifteenth, 'cause that gives you a little bit of time.
We're not meeting on June fifteenth.
No, no, it, it just gives you a little bit of...
Deadline anyways.
In, in fact, what you should do is, if there's a, if there's a, there's a hearing in June, the fir, for, for some reason, it goes into June, then you're gonna wanna get those fourteen days and those twenty-three days.
Yeah, so really, June third...
Twenty days?
It should be like June thirtieth or something like that.
Exactly.
Want to do June, do June thirtieth?
Mm-hmm.
It gives you time, if this goes to the June hearing.
Motion to extend the, continue the hearing for the special permit.
No, for the...
Beyond, the variance beyond the one hundred days, as requested, correct?
With a final action date of June thirtieth.
I'd like to make the motion, extend the...
You wanna sign that?
The hearing for the variance to June thirtieth, as requested by council, and that will be for final action.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
I would just need a motion to close.
I don't think we're gonna...
We're just continuing.
No, you're not.
I'm just trying to...
Don't you?
I'm a people...
Hold on, Paul, one second, one second.
Yep.
Alright, I'm here. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright, goodnight. Sorry for long.
Alright. You guys were shorter than the last year.